What page are we on Jim?
I don't have pages.
344.
Well, we have about five budgets to go through, so hopefully it will keep you awake after one shift. It won't be too bad. So, I thought Scooter would come over later, so I want to start transit and make sure we get through this. But I'll just go over some of the highlights for transit. One thing that you'll notice, or that some of you that are newer, is that the local levy share of the transit budget, it's only about 20% of our total budget, and it's been stagnant for years. What we've been doing is using fund balance and/or things like CARES Act and ARPA to fill some of the gaps. So what we do traditionally is we budget very conservatively, and then if we underspend, that tends to increase our fund balance. So, the good news is that we've been able to keep that levy pretty steady throughout the years. If we need it, then we fill in with fund balance, which we've been able to do for many years now, and we should be able to do that for a few more. But, just a warning that someday that's going to catch up. You can't do that forever. We've been trying to keep the levy as low as possible, so that's how we've been doing it with transit. And really, you know, the city gets rate-banged for its buck with transit. I mean, we're 50...when I started, you know, almost 11 years ago, it was about 60%, and gradually decreased about a half percent per year until 2020, when fortunately we got...or unfortunately, now you look at it, we got some CARES Act and some ARPA funds, and that helped fill some of those gaps, as well as the federal government started funding transit a little bit more than...or transportation in general, more than they had in the past. So, we went up about a half percent a year the last few years, so we're now closer to the 55% to 56%. Hopefully that continues. So, how transit funding works is, we take our total budget, the federal and state share, like I said, fills that about 50% to 60%, depending on the year. Then we have fares, which takes that local amount needed down. We have some great partners as well, as well as the FTA, so the Federal Transit Administration. We have WISTOT, so the Wisconsin Department of Transportation contributes. Winnebago County contributes and helps us with some of our paratransit programs. Fox Valley Tech, we have a revenue agreement with, so that their students can ride for free. And most recently, the United Way has helped us with our Access to Jobs program. So we have a number of partners. UWO, we used to have a revenue agreement with. Now they pay as they go, so they still offer our passes to students, but you have to actually actively go and request one. But they will purchase them from us and provide them for any students that would like that. Fox Valley Tech, our agreements up at the end of this year, we've been actively negotiating with them, or started negotiating. The person we need to talk to is on vacation, but we've talked to a couple of people and they're working on it. You know, and then my other message is just, you know, our grant funding, like I said, it's great, but there's a lot of strings attached to that, so Steve and his staff and our staff spend a lot of time on reporting, and we get reviewed every three years by the feds, every couple of years by the states, in addition to all the regular city audits and everything that happened as we go. So, we are heavily, heavily scrutinized, and we spend a lot of time and effort on compliance. So, if you ever wonder what we're working on, if there's no project going on, we already have a lot of other things that we have to do. So, I'll get into some of the strategic plan highlights that we had this last year and this coming year. This past year, and Steve will attest to this, it's been very, very busy. I think we've had a productive year though as well. We've improved our service and our efficiency quite a bit. A few things that we've done this year is, as you're aware, we updated the transit development plan, which is our strategic plan, that's updated approximately every five years. As a result of that, we had a slight fare increase. We improved our inter-lines, so that more of the routes get downtown, and that they make a little more sense for both our staff and our riders. We altered a few routes to improve our service. We expanded our coverage area to include some requested destinations, such as the DMV, which right now is more popular with people registering to vote and those types of things. And the North Industrial Park, we had a number of riders that were employed in businesses up there that we're now able to service. So, while we didn't meet the needs or wants of everybody, we did get quite a few needs met with through this latest iteration. Another thing we're working on is installing a fire suppression system at our transit garage. We had an antiquated fire warning system, which was not operable, and we didn't have any fire suppression system. With having 16 buses at a half million dollars each, that's probably not a good recipe there. So, we worked with the fire department, and we've now...we're able to use some ARPA funds to get a fire suppression system in our building, which, as you've seen with our facility report, our building is antiquated as well, so we're probably on the list with the rest of the city buildings, but at some point in time, we're at capacity and will continue to make do as long as we can, as I know there's some other higher priority facilities. We recently implemented Wisco, which is powered by a company called Yumo. That is an electronic fare collection system. Riders can now purchase fares through the app and/or at retail locations such as our office, the public library, City Hall, CVS, Walgreens. Our hope is that the majority of people will use the app now or in the future, however, if not, we have the reloadable cards that are basically like reloadable gift cards, and you scan as you get on the bus. We also made those available to students, and it has made that fare collection much more convenient for our riders, and it makes it more efficient for everyone. There's less interaction with the drivers. Of course, cash is still an option as well. I know when we rolled it out, some people were nervous about that. We said cash will always be an option. We don't see that changing, however, we do see more and more people using electronic options. The other thing we have going on right now is we spend a lot of time and effort on preparing for Phase Two of the Downtown Transit Center. This past year, we acquired the former Grand Opera House office building, which they just recently vacated, and that'll be done for this project. There still is a lot of work to be done with that. It took a long time to get through the real estate process with the federal, state, environmental regulations, but we're almost there. We have Cooney Architects, who you're all familiar with, they're working through the environmental design issue currently. A second platform will be added along with a public building. The public building will have public restrooms, which, since I started, I felt that's very important for our clients. It seems like that's, you know, it just should be an expectation of public transit, however, we haven't had it. It comes with good and bad. Obviously, we know we're going to have issues, and we're going to have to work on the safety and security of the facility, however, it is a comfort issue for our riders. And then it'll also have a climate control waiting area. The second platform will allow us to board in a light off-street. We currently have a couple of buses that run inter-city service, Amtrak Throughway, and Labor's Connect, that currently board in a light on the street with a new facility that'll allow them to get off the street, so that we're safer as well. And that'll also set us up for the safety and security going into the future. Really, what I want to talk about today is two proposed changes that will help us be more efficient and better serve our customers now in the future. I'll lay out a couple of different things here. Paratransit hours. We are federally required to provide paratransit service to match our fixed route service. That means our paratransit has to match our fixed route service hours, and that is what almost all the agencies offer. At some point in time, Go Transit decided to offer 24/7 service. I assume that was due to a local cab company providing that service, and they had drivers and vehicles available, and that was mutually beneficial when funding was widely available. Since I've been here, like I said, we've talked about this probably yearly for about 11 years, that we need to continue to evaluate that. It's about 10% of our rides are after hours. So we engaged East Central, the Regional Plan Commission, to help us study that in service, and impact those hours have on our service, and we learned a few things. We are the only transit agency in state that offers 24/7. None of Milwaukee or Madison offer that. Our potential vendors are reluctant to bid on the service due to the hours, thereby limiting our competition or vendor choices. The vendors that have bid have stated that that greatly increases their costs, and they have to staff accordingly, so they have to have administration as well as drivers on call. In fact, the other vendor that we had for the service, at one point in time, we had two. We had City Cab and another one called Running. Running has indicated that they lost money providing that service, and when they bid on our last contract, it was a half million dollars higher than the current vendor that we have. So, we currently have City Cab doing the service, and they're doing the best they can, but they honestly, they struggle. They struggle to recruit and retain drivers. Their service is so-so. We believe that focusing those paratransit service hours will help the current as well as future vendors offer better, more efficient service. We just need to improve that service, and this is one way we can do it. If we're ever forced to take that service in-house, which is viable as well, we know that our current vendor is getting up there in age, and it's unknown what their succession plan is, and if they will stay continuing to operate, so we need to plan for the future. If we ever have to take that in-house, that's going to be just cost prohibitive if we have to staff that 24/7. A couple of other things that we're doing to improve that service though, so that contract is in its fourth year. We have coming up in '25, it's three years with two one-year options. So our current plan is to work with the current vendor to purchase dispatch ride scheduling software to assist the current and future vendors to improve that service. And that software will also help us better monitor the service, we'll have real-time data. We believe that if we don't alter that service, we'll continue to receive one or two bids at the best, and that cost and service is going to suffer. I mentioned earlier, the software, it's our desire to eventually offer some form of microtransit to expand service hours and areas of coverage. However, with our current vendor, we don't think that's possible. It's likely that many of our...it's also likely that many of our current after-service hours rides could be handled by the Access to Jobs program. When we evaluated a lot of this employment-related, and some of those rides could probably be offered by friends or family or volunteer drivers. Access to Jobs, we'll continue to offer 24/7, and it's likely we'll have to bid that separately. So, that topic that I just laid out, it's on the agenda for the November 12 Transportation Committee. We'll also offer the public hearing. We discussed it with Winnebago County, and we will discuss it further in upcoming ADRC meeting. So I wanted to give you that information, because it is in the budget currently, our contracted service, which is our vendors for third-party service. So we kept it in there at the current amount. I mean, it's unknown how this will affect that, assuming that it goes through. So that's one thing I just wanted to make you aware of. Another thing is EAA. As most of you know, we offer show services between UWO and EAA, and we have historically. We are starting to struggle with that. We have for the last few years. Although, we've had a lot of rides. We've ridden about 20,000 rides this past year, but that is down about 28%. So as the EA attendance has increased, our ridership from UWO and VAC decreased. And departmentally, we added 447 hours approximately for the week. So, we had driver...we had one driver that worked, what's he, 105 hours?
104.7, I believe.
So that's just not sustainable. It's not safe for us. It's not good for our regular riders. We just can't do that. And staffing is, with it being what it is, and UWO cutting back on lodging, and we believe that there's some private companies that are capable of doing that work, it just doesn't make sense for us to continue doing that. We've already talked to UWO about it, so they're aware of the upcoming possibility, and to the Visitor Incriminators Center Bureau, and they offered to help get a private vendor work with UWO, so that they can hopefully find someone to fill that void. Last year, they ran some shuttles from Target, and I believe Walmart, so we could easily get riders to deal with locations, and if they wanted to shuttle from there, they could easily do that. So, with all those additional hours and all the additional work, we figured our...we brought in about $7,000 net profit. So it's just, the bang just isn't there, and the downside is greater than the upside. You know, when it started, when we were getting a lot of rides, we had a lot more drivers. We had a lot more drivers that were willing to work that service. That's no longer the case. I'll talk a little bit more about staffing in a second. I mentioned the school contract. That ridership continues to be high. Knock on wood, this year's gone a lot better, as far as student behaviors go. We have those, the new Wisco cards I mentioned earlier, all the students have those, and that has enhanced the program. But there's still a little ways to go. We can work with the school district, make it a little more efficient, so it makes it a little bit easier on our staff and our drivers. However, it's so far so good for this school year. And then, as far as staffing goes, I want to mention that. And you've probably heard from other departments, but we're no different. Operators, they're hard to find for transit operators. Fortunately, we have a pretty good maintenance crew that's been there now for quite a while, but we are having...struggling to recruit and retain transit operators. We've filled in with part-time operators, however, they're hard to find as well. We've had at least one vacant position most of the year. We recently, this last year, we lost two of our experienced operators to the sanitation department. Why? It's work-life balance. I mean, would you rather work 6:00 to 2:00, 2:30 Monday through Friday, or would you rather work anywhere from 6:15 to 6:45 Monday through Saturday? And at least nine to 12 drivers are required to work every Saturday, so that's basically 60% to 60% or more chance you have to work on Saturday. So, that's just not...it's not something that's desirable. And honestly, I mean, we've had a lot of experienced drivers that have retired, and we're just not replacing them. We're seeing the quality just isn't as high as it used to be, because we have such a small pool to pick from. So we are concerned about that, and we're concerned about the effect on service. At some point in the future, we believe we're probably going to have to evaluate our fixed service hours. Similar, Appleton did that. They recently cut back. Now they're doing 6:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, and 6:01 on Saturday. We're going to have to look at that if we're going to continue quality service and have quality drivers.
So they have less hours than us now?
Yes, they do. So, it's kind of...it's flipped. We used to hear about how, well, Appleton had so much better service because of their hours, et cetera. Now, they actually have less hours than we do, and we're competing...the other thing that goes unsaid is we're competing for the same set of drivers. We have drivers that live in Appleton, that live in Kimberley. We have drivers that live in Fond du Lac, Berlin. I mean, so, they have a choice. They can come to Oshkosh, or they can go to Appleton, drive from Valley Transit, they can go to Fond du Lac. So, we have to stay competitive. So, we currently have one or two agencies, which we don't really have a pipeline right now, so we're continuing to fill in the best that we can. So those are kind of the highlights of this year and going forward. Again, I think that if we ever were to reduce either transit and/or fixed operating hours, it's likely that we would look at microtransit, however, we have to have a vendor that's capable of doing that. So somehow, we got to work through those issues. So, those are the highlights from transit.
Yep, Julie.
So, I don't think you're going to want me to say this, but what I heard you say is that even though right now in the 2025 proposed budget, we have the tax levy portion increasing to about $300,000 from 2024, potentially if we had to, we could decrease that and use more fund balance?
Yeah, I didn't...historically, I didn't look at the front pages, but historically, you use fund balance to kind of fill that gap, so, yeah. I didn't know how you proposed to do that, but that's what's been done historically. I think, like I said, I think the risk with that is it's going to catch up eventually, so I wouldn't align that too heavily, but there is some option there.
I like your points out, Steve. On our side, at least.
In terms of like the EAA thing, just as a relevant example, I spent a good four-plus days down the Chicagoland area for a large sports tournament. They, you know, as part of my ticket in, I had the option to basically add on a transit portion for a hefty add-on. Very similar to the EA function though, you know, distance, points, but, you know, for the four-day thing, it was a good $60 to $75 I paid to just have access to that transit capability. So on the private, I mean, it's an EA function. If it's something that, you know, their members and their guests want to use, that's something that I'd be uncomfortable saying that that's on them to set up, if it's, you know, getting to the point where we just can't...we can't do it economically. It doesn't make sense. We don't have the support. There is a private system that's available to them at a cost. So I support the idea that you may be on a path to saying that you just...we can't do that anymore. I get it.
And, I mean, like you mentioned, you got...you paid so a premium there. Because of federal regulations, we are not allowed to do that. We are not allowed to...there's some called charter bus regulations, so we're not allowed to charge a premium fare. And the reason for that is because they don't want us competing with business that private industry can do. So, we've got away with it historically by our fares was $5 one way and $30 for what we passed, which was comparable to our regular fare. It's a little bit higher, however, we offer round trip, and it's just outside the city, so our regular fare is $2 each way, so it'd be $4 versus $5. So, the feds have said, yeah, that's okay, but we can't really raise it much higher than that, because then they would consider it a premium fare, and then we'd be competing with private business, and they don't allow that. So there's that, and then I think that UWO has publicly stated too, that they're trying to get out of the lodging business. They plan to still lodge people for EAA, but it's going to be less than it was previously. I know they're planning on tearing down Grunhagen, which is the facility that houses the majority of their guests, so that's where our shuttle was running from and to, so, yes. I think that that business model's changed.
I think they're going to continue the Horizon Village. It'll just be a smaller group. Well, plus, you've had...you have extra buses in your fleet, so you'd be able to reduce your fleet as well, right? So that'll give Brian some relief as well on the shop side.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, we need...we have 16 buses, which we need all those buses whenever we serve EAA. They're all on the road, and we have our mechanics keeping them going. However, that is another good point. We should be able to reduce our fleet size, one to two buses if we no longer do that, and that's $500,000 each, so that's a pretty good savings as well.
Would we sell off buses, or just sunset them as they were?
We'd sunset them, yeah. Yeah, we...there's really not...there's not much value in a used transit bus, unfortunately. We, historically, most of them, when they go out of service, they go to the scrapyard, just because, unless you're another public transit service agency. It's not like a school bus where you can just have somebody go and use it as a camper or drive it for field trips. It's a pretty specialized piece of equipment that needs mechanics that are pretty specialized to work on, and that also, it's heavy-duty. You know, you're not going to take that on many school trips or...
Too heavy for ice fishing, so you can't take it.
Steve, if you could get one to go ice fishing.
If I could. Use a drone.
You know, I've done this a couple times, and I apologize, Council, but Jim has brought this issue up about the paratransit a number of times, and I think one of the reasons that he hasn't done it, and I'm speaking for Jim, and I apologize if I'm overspeaking, but part of it is not getting much feedback, and I think the transit, the Transportation Committee has kind of acknowledged it. Are there...what are the thoughts? Because I think it's easy to say, yeah, the EAA folks, they can fend for themselves, and there are viable options. I mean, the numbers with paratransit at night are pretty...excuse me, pretty minimal. But is there any feedback?
It's tough. I know we've got...the last time there was a change, maybe a change of provider, three, four years ago, I remember, there being some hiccups. You talk about quality of service. There was a quality of service type of a thing. I remember that. It's tough, because we know there are mobility issues. They're, you know, significant, and there are all different types and impacts, and as we cut services, it also means there will be less in the workforce, potentially less in the workforce, or less access to getting to work and getting to work on time.
We would still run paratransit. What hours would you envision?
Well, it would be 6:15 to 6:45 Monday through Saturday, so same as the bus. However, we still...we acknowledge, we probably still have to provide access to jobs 24/7.
Okay, so it's...
So, yeah, there are some...we did study the service and what the usage was, or the reason for use. A lot of it seems to be employment, and we think that a lot of those rides would get absorbed by access to jobs. So, there still would be an option for those folks. And that's part of the goal, is to contradict, to expand. So our goal is to make this more efficient, kind of get it in line, and then eventually get a vendor that could do microtransit. And if we could do that, then we would have some alternatives. Like Appleton, for instance, nobody does 24/7, so I don't think that we'd do that again. However, when they reduced their fixed route hours, they did offer micro or cab service, basically for those hours that they reduced. We think that's a possibility in the future. However, we would have to come up with some parameters, but we think it's best interest to contract, manage that well, and then if that we can, and have a provider that's capable, then we could look at that. But we are going to have to continue to offer access to jobs 24/7, just because I think that is a valuable service.
Can you explain the Access to Jobs program?
Sure. Yep, so Access to Jobs is a program that...it was started by the state a long time ago. It was run by Grant. And what it is, is if you live and work in the city of Oshkosh, and you work 30 hours or more, you're eligible for a cab ride to or from work outside of fixed route hours and/or if your commute is unreasonable distance from fixed route. So say if you live or work a mile or more from the fixed route bus stop, you'd be eligible for that service. And so it's a cab ride. It's currently, is it $5?
Four.
$4 a ride each way. So, and we work with United Way. It used to be 200% of the federal poverty level. If you're at that or more, or less I should say, with United Way, that was increased to 275%. So now, we're seeing very few people that are not qualified based on income. There still are a few that the gap would be if you worked less than 30 hours.
Sure.
So there are still some part-time workers that that doesn't cover. We have...Steve and I have talked about that in the past. I mean, we're not sure how many more riders I would bring in, but maybe we could look at going to like 20 hours or something like that.
If you take the Access to Jobs out of the equation, you're averaging about 10 rides a night after hours. The biggest window is between 6:00 and 10:00. That's about 6.5 rides a day. The other window is, you know, early in the morning from 2:00 to 6:00. That's about 3.3. The non-ambulatory portion, for people who are, you know, can't walk on their own, is miniscule, the after-hours. As Jim mentioned, the vast majority, you know, we can't 100% guarantee, but the majority is employment, and that's part-time employment that doesn't qualify for the Access to Jobs program. So somehow, that program could be expended or extended to drop the hours threshold below 30, I think that would help a lot of people out.
So, that'll be, like I mentioned earlier, we'll take the Transportation Committee in November, give the public a chance to comment. Then we will talk to the ADRC at one of their upcoming meetings, and then probably bring that to Council, just to get your final say on it in December.
I like the logic. I mean, you're definitely thinking on the right lines, it's just, it's the impact, right? You know, so I didn't appreciate the sensitivity to that as well. It's not an...you know, it's not a...you're not making it easy, or it's not an easy decision to make, I guess is a better way to put it. So I appreciate the thought logic on it.
Yeah, and we are...the members, I know Carl was on our Transportation or Committee or Transit Board for a while, but the members that have been on there a few years, when we brought this up again, they said, we've talked about this in the past, haven't we? Yep, we have. So they understand. Councilmember Nichols isn't here today, but when he came to do a tour, we did talk to him about this, so he understands the issues. So, yeah. So, yeah, it's not easy, but I think in the long run, it's probably the right thing to do, and it'll help us in the future. So, that's transit. So I appreciate you taking the time to go through that. We have four more to go through, which, but these aren't as interesting.
This is his last time going through a budget with Scooter. He should commemorate.
Last time.
Yeah.
Double my caffeine.
31 years.
Yep. So we got two things to get to before we get to scooters. Let's do the parking utility, which is on page, I think 340, unless they...I don't know. Like I said, we didn't get the page number. So that is, there's not a whole lot to see there. You know, this...the parking utility, as Council's aware, you know, we... You know, this, uh, the parking utility, um, as council's aware, you know, we've, uh, we increased some lease stalls this last year, we leased about six to eight so far. We also increased the number two hour parking stalls. Um, as you're all aware, after we initially did those rollouts, um, you know, there were a few kinks and a few people that were upset, but now it's operating smoothly and we haven't heard as much. As you know, Transportation Committee, uh, said, let's give it a year, see how, let the changes settle in and see, see how it goes and, um, big noise revisit. Um, so I think business and visitors have adjusted. You know, the Polco survey is out, I believe it closes this week. So, when I talked to, um, Andy who works at Polco, he said he should have some results in, in the coming weeks that, then we should be able to share with you. Um, and then we can have that further discussion. But as far as the utility goes, and I know Mark and Julie and I talked about whether we even have a utility anymore because it's, it's basically break even. We make a little, enough money to cover the cost, we're not really gaining much. So, there's not really a lot to see there other than each year we do some capital projects. That's about the only thing that'd probably be interesting. So, any questions on parking? Okay. If not, then let's, uh, do the sign budget, which is on, I think, I'll find the page here. That would be page one forty-six, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the sign budget is basically status quo. Uh, fortunately, we got a pretty good crew there. We have two full-time employees that have been there a few years now. Um, one that started with us is a seasonal, so that's why he's great to see. And then we have two seasonals each year and we've been pretty fortunate that our seasonals must like us enough to come back at least for a couple of years. So, um, that has worked out well. The only thing of note is this, this following, this coming year, we need to add another seasonal. Um, and basically, the reason for that is, um, we get a lot of bang for our buck with the seasonals because obviously they don't cost us a whole lot of money and it also helps develop future workforce. But the real reason is a safety issue, um, when we're painting long lines. So, we have a paint truck, uh, which you may have seen, it's kind of an interesting contraption. And then, um, there's one person that sits on the back to set cones. However, they're pretty unprotected when they're out there in traffic. So, our traffic painters brought up this concern, they brought it up, um, over the years, they're getting extremely concerned about it as traffic and distracted driving gets worse and worse. They're not protected from anything. So, if a vehicle went to rear end them or wasn't paying attention, I mean, they would be toast. So, uh, we looked at a number of different options and we've come up with the best solution is we need to have somebody follow in a chaser truck when they're doing those long lines just so that there's a vehicle protecting that person in the back. So, that's what the additional seasonal will be, it now becomes a three-person operation versus a two. Um, however, that'll work out well because while we can have the two seasonals helping the person in the truck, then we can still have, um, the other full-time member working with a different seasonal and getting the job done. This year, we got a little bit behind just because our truck was down for a big part of the year. However, we did, the weather cooperated and fortunately, we had a seasonal that was able to stay, um, an extra month and a half and now works for the parks. So, it worked out for us, it worked out for her and, um, you know, hopefully we got a long-term city employee out of it. So, that's the sign division. Any questions on sign? All right. Thanks. And now we get to Scooter. So, as we mentioned, this might, it is probably Scooter's last year here, so, um, we are...
It is.
He's, he's waffled back and forth a few times, but I think he's finally made up his mind.
So, we already said, okay. Probably work through the third week of January and then run education until sometime in March or thereabouts.
And we've, uh, and with Scooter's pending retirement, um, he and I, uh, we've been working on our transition plan actively for a few months now, so we have, um, some plans and we'll get the position posted, uh, in the near future. So, that, he's got, we're going to leave some big shoes to fill, um, but, uh, you know, like I said, we got a transition plan, we'll get some people trained up and, um, continue on. But the electric division, um, as most of you're aware, some of you are a little bit newer, um, and I do invite anybody who hasn't been over by us to at least come on over and take a tour and we can show you what, uh, not only transit, but electric and signs do as well. Electric takes care of all the city-owned traffic signals and the streetlights. We do the, the layouts for streetlights for new roads, uh, maintain the city's fiber optic network, which continues to get larger and larger. Um, and then they do a lot of electric work on all the city buildings, uh, for all the city buildings and divisions. They've worked on special projects like the police department, city hall remodels. Every time something needs to be remodeled, these guys are pretty actively involved because it usually involves some type of wiring or moving things around.
Compulsed a lot of the four-person crew.
Yep, so you've got four full-time, um, electricians. Um, and that is status quo, um, in the budget is...
Which is getting harder and harder to do everything with small budgets.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, in the past, we've had some seasonal electricals before I got here, but they, at one point in time, they were, they were cut out of the budget. So, um, some point in time, we might need to look at something like that. Um, they did some of the, like, painting the traffic signal poles and things like that that we don't really have time for. Um, so that's a possibility in the future. But, yeah, like Scooter said, that four-person crew does, uh, do quite a bit of work. Uh, you know, some of the other things they've done is they installed, uh, the RFPs, those rapidly flash vehicles that have become more and more popular. Um, that's all done by them in-house. They do the layouts, they pour the concrete, they install the equipment, make sure it all functions. Uh, so that's something that they will continue to do. But the budget is pretty much status quo. Any questions on electric? Okay, if not, um, the only other thing that we have, the last budget, is street lighting. That is, as you know, a large, uh, quantitative item on the local lobby. Um, it's about a million dollars a year, street lighting is. Uh, it's basically a cost benefit in a living in the city. Um, you know, people do like their streetlights, it's, uh, provides a level of safety, which, as you're all aware, um, it, it can be controversial as well. I mean, some people want more streetlights, some people want less streetlights. Um, a lot of them have been upgraded to LED over the years. Some people think they're too bright. Um, so Scooter's constantly working with, and he does a good job dealing with this various requests we get from, from the citizens and trying to accommodate them best we can. Obviously, we can't accommodate everything, but we do the best job we can. As you're aware, we have the, um, street lighting study that, uh, we will be presenting to you in the near future. As WPS replaces some of our older poles, uh, their standard is not the old poles. So, uh, depending on how council, uh, goes with that, uh, there might be some additional costs, uh, but we will, we will provide you with some options for how that effect could be paid for. Uh, we did, just maybe give you a little bit of a teaser, we did talk to the community foundation, um, and if and when some residents were, wanted to donate, they would be willing to manage those funds, so that's a plus. However, if that ever did come into fact, obviously, the policy options, that would be the hard part to work out. Any questions on streetlights?
I've toured, uh, the transportation, uh, facility, uh, Steve, Scooter, the guys were great. Uh, one of the things I just want to highlight, this may be jumping a little bit ahead of the CIP, is that, uh, you know, Mark's figure of a hundred million dollars, you guys are in there. It's the old city incinerator. It's not built for purpose. So, when we talk about having this long-listed facilities that we need to refresh, this is, this is one of, you guys are making do of what you got, I really appreciate it, but it just shows that what is that.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up because, yeah, it is, it is an old facility. It was city incinerator.
Had it for a few years until, like, eighteen eighty, didn't work.
Yeah. So, we have a huge...
Built a need for a while, but it's definitely not, not set up the way we were at the beginning.
And it's at capacity, I mean, we're, like, like Jacob mentioned, we're making do, however, it's, yeah, it's on that list and it's probably, at whatever point in time you get, uh, the city hall project done, it, we will probably have the oldest facility that's city-owned after that ever since.
Paul and I could probably attest to throwing garbage in the pit when we were kids. Backing the cars up there and throwing stuff in the pit.
Yep. So, any other questions? That's...
Jim, you want to talk about any CIPs?
Um, we can, I didn't really...
It's really just the park, it's really just parking lots, right?
Yeah, so, uh, the parking lots, um, that, this past year, we did the, uh, the police department Sally Port, we did, um, Spanbeller Park, we replaced the biofilters in the four-hundred East Lot, um, we did the Irving Street, um, that was funded a little differently, but that, those are all parking lot projects.
East Ninth Street Lot, the river walk is funded through another project, but that one's not a parking lot.
Right, that's true. East Ninth Lot, that one, we actually got to get in the Minnesota code yet because it's so new. So, those are the ones we did this year, this coming year. Um, we are, in conjunction with the Transit Center project, we will be improving, whether that's reconstructing or overlaying the, we call it the Convention Center South Lot, but it's usually called the High Avenue Lot, it's the one, um, just behind the Transit Center. So, we'll be doing that in conjunction, thank you, with the, um, Transit Center project. So, I think we'll get some good, uh, good economies of scale there. And then, we were going to do the, uh, three hundred West Lot, which is the one behind Manila. However, with the grant project going on and not knowing what's going to happen there, we were asked to bump that back a little bit until we figure out what makes sense. Um, once we figure out what's going on there, then that could probably become a projection in that. So, we had that one all ready to go and engineering had it designed, however, we put that on hold, um, and now we're working at possibly, possibly doing the museum lots. Um, they were the next on the list. So, engineering is trying to fit that in, the design, best they can. They're, they were, gave me a lukewarm commitment, kind of a, we're going to try, we'll do the best we can. So, if it doesn't get done this year, then it won't work on that next year. But we will try to get that done. As I'm sure you heard from them, they got staffing challenges as well, so... But the good thing is with the parking lot CIP, if we don't use it this year, then we just roll those funds forward to the following year, so it will get used eventually. Um, so those are the highlights from, uh, the parking utility. Um, there's probably not a whole lot else on there that's interesting. We, um, applied for some grants for transit buses. We have two that'll be at their twelve-year end of useful life in twenty-five. Um, so, but depending on how we, with EAA, you know, if we get one funded, we'll just can, we'll cycle them out as they age out of the fleet then, if we, if we reduce the fleet.
And we are still seeing very, very long lead times on those type of purchases. So, we just replaced, uh, replacing our bucket drop, it's got two year, we're deep in time, so those, those things are still, still extended to twenty-five, so unfortunate.
Yeah.
So, the parking lot was really the one, just to give everybody a, in the loop on that. I'm glad you mentioned the grand because that was, that's part of that whole project and it was like, there's no sense in him doing that. So, again, you know, we talked about that this morning and the mayor mentioned it about John Urban and, you know, Jim does with parking lots what John Urban does with the roofing project. He takes a look at all of them and, you know, they're, they're all equal in his eyes, so he picks the ones that are, they're the ones that absolutely need it. And if you look at the grand lot, or the, the one by Manila, it absolutely needs it, but there's no sense in doing it. So, we'll, there's, there's plenty more that, where that came from and Jim will fill in with, with another project.
Yeah, and that's worked out really well. I think when I started, um, I'll give credit to Mark for that, implementing those, those, um, policies, you know, of creating that fund where you continually, because there's needs every single year, so you just put money, you fund them as you can. Um, that's worked out really well. I think that the quality of our parking lots has improved greatly since I've been here, especially in the downtown area. Um, and we can continue to do one here and there and the same thing with the parks. I think that policy's worked out great. I mean, some cost more than others, but if we just continually improve and roll those funds as we need them for the following year, that, um, that makes a lot of sense and we get a lot done that way. So, I know that the one, I'll just mention one parking lot in particular that I think's interesting is, is the Red Arrow Park.
I mean, what's waiting for it?
It's gonna...
Should have left that one.
How many of you are familiar with, with Red Arrow in terms of the history of that? Why don't you give us a...
Yeah, so basically, it's, it's on top of a landfill, so that whole park is. We had ACOM look at it a few years ago and, um, at some point, and I, I've been talking with Ray about this for years, at some point, if we're going to continue to operate that long-term, we need to do something. That parking lot is awful, there's potholes in the middle and it's, I mean, I, my kids are growing now, but I remember taking them there and I wouldn't park in that parking lot, it was like maybe your car driving through there.
But you'd have to not only scrape the asphalt, you'd have to overexcavate and basically replace, relocate the landfill.
Those were, those were put in and sowed, so if I remember right, there's ten, ten feet of, of native was left and then there was a twenty-foot sallop on that mistake and it was filled with garbage. So, you had a ten and a twenty and a ten and a twenty and when you go out there, you can walk and see where it's, it's, you know, where it's started to saddle out, so.
Yeah, so it was a cap off.
Oh, six, uh...
About the same time West opened.
Yeah, I was going to say, right, right after the last...
Mid-sixties?
And it, and we're, you know, with the new rules, you know, where years ago, we would go in there, we had to replace an underground or something for the lighting in there, we were just going in and excavating back over now. Those, those rules have all changed also. We have underground failures there, stuff now, and you can't just move and start digging because of, uh, the new DNR rules. So, it, it, it brings up more challenges than just parking lots, so.
Yes.
You know, fall by the time.
So, at some point, I, you know, I know Ray works on his parks master, so I've told him over the years, at some point, you just got to make the case, if we really need to do it, it's going to be about a million dollars. It can be done. Um, it's similar to, um, what used to be called Riverside Lot next to the Convention Center. So, basically, what you do is you, you kind of float the parking lot, you cap it and it kind of floats a little bit in it. Um, ACOM said, you know, we could get twenty to forty years out of it, it's just, it's going to take some engineering. So, if that's going to be a long-term use, then we need to do something about it, but, that is the one lot that every year I do the CIP, I'm like, that is the worst lot in the city, but at some point, we'll have to decide if we want to fund that. So, I know, we gave you an option a few years ago, but there was a better alternative for that, those funds, however.
And you'll hear it from, from baseball parents who go over and they're, they've never gone to it until their kid plays in, in Little League, they go over there and they go, this lot is terrible. And it clearly, as Jim said, it is the worst parking lot in the city, but, uh, we, if we just did a paving job on it, literally within two or three years, it'd be, it'd be gone.
I actually, well, I actually wonder about, it may not be well-received, especially in certain parts of, certain users, but shutting it down due to its, its condition. Um, it's, it's there, I mean, in terms of, I don't even know if it's borderline, but it's there in terms of its condition of the potential for, you know, what is...
Yeah, and that's more, you know, a question for Ray, but I know that, um, OIB, who's the biggest user of that, has tried to get other baseball facilities in the city and didn't work out for various reasons. However, um, yeah, I think that everybody realizes that it's not ideal, however, then they got to come up with a little different location fund and that hasn't happened so far.
It's one of those, it is what it is kind of things, yeah. I had one other question, just in terms of pedestrian safety. We, we briefly touched on a pedestrian bridge earlier.
Yep.
It's not about the, the bridge itself. It was, uh, one of the reasons behind the pedestrian bridge is pedestrian safety and roundabouts. And we've kind of piecemealed some of the safety components of the roundabouts. Certain ones have, forgive, I think, is, it's a term...
RFBS.
Yeah, RFBS.
And we were, we were the, I, if I'm not mistaken, we were the first ones to actually, uh, install RFBS in a roundabout. After the fact, we were actually part of a federal study, uh, for Dr. Jackson a few years ago.
Yep.
So, um, uh, and now the, the state with roundabouts, uh, they put conduits in, you know, in a construction of a new roundabout with anticipation that there possibly could be, you know, pedestrian signals in there, so. Um, yeah, it's, it...
Per roundabout costs, is it still, wasn't it in the thirties at some point?
It's, it's just under thirty per...
Yeah, per.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, you know, I, I travel the west side a lot, obviously, I'm over there, Ninth Street, Whistler, you know, twenty-one, those, those, between those, what, I'm over there, Ninth Street, Whistled, you know, 21, those, between those, what, 10 roundabouts right in that, that area, significant pedestrian traffic. We've seen, obviously there's some pedestrian, there's, you know, there's data to say there's near misses and actual hits.
And even with the flashers that we, we still see, we still see that same type of scenario.
Yeah.
Even with, even when we're out there with our vests on and stuff, and we're testing, and we do a monthly test to make sure it's working, it's amazing that, you know, vehicles don't, don't stop. And we used to segment it out that, you know, only the side of the roundabout that had pedestrian there. Now we flash them all. So if you're coming around the far side, now you, they're flashing for a reason. But even with us out there, we, you know, cars come there, and also maybe, oh, there's someone there, really. It's, you know, but, and, you know, we try to, and again, the new theory is, is when you're out there, you make eye contact, you know, make the move that you're going to, but make sure you make eye contact with that driver to make sure, hey, I'm in a crosswalk, lights are flashing. But they do, they do help.
Okay. I just, just wondering about if, if it's, obviously, it's not in the budget, if it's worth considering at some point, some pedestrian safety enhancements to those...
The bed bike, or the bed bike.
Bed bike.
Foxconn, I'll just put in it, Grace.
Yeah, and I knew that, that, I remember the incidents we've had there, and even over on Whistled too. And, but just wondering, it can eat up a budget really fast, because the budget for bike and pet isn't very much.
Right. So, so basically, a couple things. So the ones on Ninth and Whistled were funded by the county. The ARDRC lobbied pretty heavily for those. They were having, there are people with mobility issues were having issues. And actually, I know one of them that I've seen, I've seen her out there the one day trying to cross at Washburn and Ninth, and vehicles did not slow down and/or stop. I mean, she looked horrified. So I definitely can understand where she's coming from, and so I'd firsthand. So, so they funded those too, like Scooter mentioned.
Just a quick side note to that, though. When we put them in like we did at Ninth and Graceland, and then Whistled and Western, Whistled and...
Washburn?
Oh, no, you're talking about the, the ones that are not at the roundabouts.
Roundabout RFBS are substantially more cost because where we put them at, like they think Grace, obviously, we only have four structures. Where in a roundabout, you're dealing with 12 structures. So it's, the cost goes up considerably.
Yeah. So, those have, those, I mentioned earlier, those are very popular. So we were able to do the one at Ninth and the one at Whistled. Those aren't at the roundabouts, but we were able to do those with bike and pedestrian funds. So it is worthwhile to continue to, you know, you put that $50,000 a year in there, and then when a project like that comes up, we can do it. The state is going to be doing a resurfacing project on Jackson Street in a couple of years, and then we will be putting them in as part of that project up near Oaklawn School for the Jackson Crossing. We just have the flashers there now. Yeah, by Viola. So, yeah, and it, I think the challenge with pedestrians and roundabouts is a couple of things. You're pretty close to the roundabouts. So when a pedestrian comes, you're, you're trained to look left the whole time, and some people don't look back to the right, and there could be pedestrians or bicycles coming from the right. And so, not only for the roundabouts, but just in general, that all those areas along 41, it's difficult to cross 41. I mean, I, I can remember when I lived out near where the mayor does, and my kids went to West, that it was difficult. So, I mean, I remember when they were in middle of high school, and they had to ride their bike for whatever reason, because I couldn't get them to where they were going. They were, they were pretty concerned, like, "How are we going to do that?" Well, you're going to have to go through the roundabouts and be careful, you know? But I think that, so, I know there's the pedestrian bridge in Fondle, and there's one in Appleton. So this, I think it'll be a nice addition for Oshkosh. Not only for, the pedestrian bicycles for things like school and recreation. However, I think it'll also allow people to, more mobility to get to the Wild Watch Trail. So like, if you live on the west side and you want to go biking on the trail, this'll give you good options. That'll, although it doesn't connect directly, it gets you very close, and vice versa. You probably saw some of the news stories. I mean, they did find people that were commuting to work on their bike that really are going to appreciate that as well. So I think it's going to be a great amenity for, for the city and improve the connectivity. Even for the city manager, he can ride his bike across town now.
Do you have any numbers on accidents in the roundabouts, particularly with pedestrians and bicycles?
Yeah. Yeah, those were in the study. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I think there was like 16 or 17 in the five-year period they looked at.
We had a few deaths in there, too.
Yeah, there have been.
But they're supposed to be safe.
It's the way they were built off.
I don't mind running dots when they had regular intersections, your number at one.
Yeah, I think for vehicular safety, the severity of incidences went down, and the number of injuries went down. However, I think they're more safe for vehicles and less safe for bikes and pedestrians. I think that's kind of what the data shows. And they do move traffic very well. So I guess that's, that's been the trade-off, and that's why, you know, the state's looking at putting RFBS in there in the future. And like Scooter mentioned, they've actually, I get requests once in a while from other cities for data on RFBS, and how well they're working, because that is, they are looking at that as an option. So the initial one was part of a study, and it was more for the impact of roundabouts for crossings for visually impaired pedestrians. So that was the initial one, and then it's, it's continued to morph since then. But, you know, bike and pedestrian safety is always a concern. I know, over the years I've been here, we've done a number of things. We had the flags, we got the, police department have the motorcycle officer who can get into the roundabouts and do some more enforcement and education. And then most recently, the RFBS, as we talked about. So pedestrian bridge will be just another enhancement to continue that effort.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else for anything transportation-related?
All right. Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
We look to go forward here. And like I said, if you want to tour, let me know. We love doing those. You can see what we do every day.
If you're having a retirement party for Christmas, I want to be invited.
All right.
Sounds good.
No one knows my real phone, no one knows my real name.
Paul, they don't know your last name?
They don't know my real name. Don't believe how many people go, "Hey, Scooter, I tried to send you an email, but I can't find it."
Yeah.
That's why I'm so...
Yeah, I'm going to try that.
Yeah, hey.
Smart.
Smart.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody. If you're, if you're good, we'll just slide right into finance, and talk about that up till break time-ish.
Sounds good. We have a Haley pop up as well, in case you have any questions. I think everyone knows that Haley's Assistant Finance Director for Finance.
Welcome.
Thanks. So, in the finance budget, we do not have much for changes. Obviously, there was a lot of different transitions within the last year within finance, Russ' retirement, and then my promotion. And then we had a different internal promotion. So it was one of those domino effects. So we really want to focus on training.
57?
Yep.
What were you on for?
I skipped right to page 60, the expenditures, but, yep.
Nope.
57. So employee training and development, we tried adding some dollars there. Otherwise, it's pretty much a static budget. Not too much has changed. Our focus has really been on looking at procedures. I think I've, probably have mentioned this to almost everyone in this room, but with having the new management team within finance, we've really looked at procedures. How can we make things more efficient? How can we reduce bottlenecks? Just how can we help other departments with the resources that we have, to a greater degree if possible? So to me, that all comes from freeing up in time. So how can we reduce those bottlenecks? So some weeks, like Haley and I can help with those department more. How can we reduce bottlenecks? So some, as an accountant can help the departments more. Just looking for those areas where we can improve our services to the other departments, because that's what finance really does, is we help support all the departments. So that has been our focus. I did ask Tony this morning to talk about the parking software. So that is one that finance works very closely with police and transportation on parking permits, parking tickets, all of those items. So I have a great finance team. They help do a lot of the research. We shift the research over to Tony, and Tony has been an excellent project manager, and he's taken it, and he ran with it, and he set up demos for us. And all the departments came and watched the demos. So he has been an excellent partner in that project. So we're making progress on that. Same thing with the credit cards. I know the council has said that they really want it to be more user-friendly for the citizens as well, as my concern about the individual credit card fees. So, again, financed a little bit of research. We sent some information to Tony, and Tony has taken that project and run with it. So we have most departments involved and sending through those demos. I think he has four different vendors. Then we already saw one vendor, and we have three more this week. So we are making terrific progress. So it's a lot of collaboration with other departments as well, to try to get these projects going. So we can see that efficiency, and also that benefit to the citizen on how can they access these items? How can they pay by credit card? Those types of things. So that is my quick spiel, and then whatever questions you guys have for us.
I don't very often just say, "Thank you, you're doing a great job," but "Thank you, you're doing a great job. We really appreciate it." It's so refreshing to hear all the things that you want to do, and it's nice to talk over lunch as well. But it's really, really good. So thank you very much. Happy to hear you.
We have a great team. Like I said, I can't do anything without the team. So we have a great team.
Julie, I have a quick question for you. It's kind of more of a high-level conceptual question in regards to budgeting. A number of communities in the state do a biannual budget. I know the city of Madison does. And from your perspective, do you think that would save the city any time, where we would only do this once every other year instead of once a year? And hypothetically, we should save staff time. But I don't know if anyone in some municipalities do biannual budgets, I'm just curious about the concept of that, whether or not it would actually matter for us versus the system.
There's pros and cons. There's been a lot of talk. I'm big on the Government Finance Officers Association. So that has been one of the discussion points on, you know, who does one, who doesn't. On a time-saving point, I don't know if it saves that much time, because every municipality that does a biannual budget on the off-year, you're still reviewing the budget, you're still updating it, you're still going through the process. Maybe to a smaller degree, but you're still going through the process.
Sure.
Strategically, it might be more beneficial to see the big, I mean, it helps you see that bigger, long-term picture. So, I mean, there's definitely pros to it. I just don't know how much time savings.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
And I'll echo some of that. I'd like to look into it at some point. I did, the time to do it, there are prescribed years where it's going to be implemented. It is next year for us, for an odd number of years going forward, if we choose to do so. And I, I understand that it will take review no matter what happens year over year. But from my perspective, I know this takes a ton of time. This is not lost, I don't think on any of us. There's a lot of work that goes into this. It seems like it affects, it affects all departments, all departments to some degree, because everybody's busy doing lots of this work for a big portion of the year. And from just my, you know, I ask lots of questions, right? From the perspective of, I ask lots of questions. I oftentimes hear, "I'll get back to you on that after I'm done with the budget stuff." There's a lot of work right now. So freeing up some of those things, I think, does help to clear a path. But I understand there's more work at some point in time, too. So it's an early next year discussion if we want to have it, and I think it'd be great to talk about.
Any other questions on the finance department budget? I know we've probably got lots of financial questions, but...
They have...
Debt service fund or anything like that?
We kind of hit on the debt service. I mean, we kind of dabble in a lot of these funds, but the debt service fund, the main comment was, we're drawing down the fund balance. So I'm using a million and a half of fund balance to help decrease the tax levy. That's what I had proposed in the budget. So, that was the main item for debt service. Interest, you can see that I am projecting, what page is that? Page 63. I'm projecting the interest to go down slightly, but it's still good, good interest rate environment, so I still have $2 million of interest budgeted for 2025. One of the changes I'm trying to implement is allocating out the interest income to all the funds that actually earn the interest, based off of their cash balance. So that is one of the things that we are changing right now. So if you have seen, there's going to be more interest income than some of those other, like special revenue funds, where in the past, the general fund has kept that interest. So we're distributing that based off of cash balance. A different item that we, from the budgeting perspective, a change that we were really trying to focus on this year was, I came from the thought process that finance should really own the personnel numbers. Between finance and HR, we should work together. We have our payroll individual that helps us put together the personnel numbers, that works hand-in-hand with HR. So I really forced that finance should be looking at the personnel numbers. The departments can help give us guidelines on, okay, overtime this, and different things like that. But some, most of those personnel numbers are dictated by FTEs, and based off of the person hired, on what benefit they pick. So I was really pushing that payroll should be focused on the personnel numbers. So like, health insurance, those types of items. The department had, really can't control, because it's really up to who's hired and what they pick. So some of those items, the departments had budgeted in the past. This year, finance put those numbers in there. We did ask a lot of questions about overtime. We're trying to make sure that our overtime budgets were realistic. And then the other big thing that we pushed was the vacancy savings. So I created a spreadsheet for every department, based off of all their personnel numbers. And if I could project out vacancy savings, and then we added vacancy savings in the areas that I thought we could. So I will own that, if I'm off on personnel, I will own that for any department, because that's, that's what I said. I was like, let me, finance take over. Let's work closely with HR, and let's try to get these personnel numbers as close as we can, and I will own it. So I'm owning it in advance if I'm wrong. But that was the goal, is I was trying to get the personnel budget to be a little bit more in line. That's sad.
If there's nothing on her operational budget, now wouldn't be a good time. We've got some time before the, we have two more. Clark's Museum, we also have a break scheduled for 2:30 if we need it. Be a good time to chat about some of the other financial things that we've been mulling at different times and kind of having to take some breaks on. Now's the time to come back to it a little bit. I can start it off, at least to get a conversation point going. Current budget is provided to us at a 2.8% increase, roughly $1.35 million. Different conversations, have picking up on different appetites. We always talk about appetite for this and appetite for that. Now would be an appropriate time to talk about, all right, how are you, now that you've heard most of this stuff, how are you feeling? What are your thoughts? I know we've, I think council's given some direction on a couple of things yesterday afternoon that will impact that number. So I throw that out there, I guess. Where are you at, and what are your thoughts? And we have time for a decent discussion here, if you're willing. So...
I can start, because I kind of started it, and that'll be easy, right? It'll be the one extreme or the other, maybe not, who knows? But I, I do have an interest in a, I mean, I have a concern, as we've all sort of talked about, with the revaluation and the fact that even at a 0% levy increase, that does increase residential tax. We all know why. We don't need to get back into how and why, as I was at work. But what that leads me to is I have an interest in using some dollars in appropriate, like you and I talked about yesterday. I don't, I don't know what that is, because that's not my expertise. But using some dollars from general fund, or I'm open to any creative solution to lower the impact this year for residential taxpayers' bills, knowing that some of that will restructure itself to a degree when the revaluation percentages are more in line. Some of it. And then I know some of that's debatable as well. But to start with the number, Julie, I just got to that last sheet that Ray saw, but me, because I didn't pay enough attention, I think. But it looks to me like to be at the current 2.83% increase in budget. That number is 812 instead of, what it is, 843. So it's roughly a $2 million shortfall in the levy. But I know that that's not necessarily the right way to do it. Like I told Matt over lunch, I have less concern with lowering the levy with these dollars, especially because when I look back at the resolution on the general fund, it lists that specifically as a reason to use those funds way forward, to lower the impact of weird things that happen. But like I said, Mark, yesterday, that, that doesn't mean that that's the best way to do it, and I don't know the best way to do it. So I'm open to solutions. The goal would be to use funds that we may or may not have available to lower that impact this year, knowing that over time, it will even itself out a little bit more. That's our first start.
No, it's a good, I think that's, that's the crux of what we've tried, I think, collectively and independently, have been struggling with the last several months. You know, opinion-wise, 2.8% increase on levy, but, you know, the, the budget itself, that's a responsible number. The, at the high level, that's a reasonable and responsible number for, for operating the city. And as again, we're in the service business. This is, this is people cost. That's what that really is to me. But I can appreciate the impacts of other things that are happening. And I think I shared it at the micro level, it's going to have an impact on Jane and John Doe.
Yep.
No matter what we do, it has an impact, but some things are completely out of our control, and that's where we lost, a lot of us got upset because we lost control in this process. You know, getting to a zero levy is, is attainable. You know, getting to a zero levy is attainable, even modestly into the, you know, even a reduction in the levy is attainable through our conversations and just making sure there's, everybody's hearing the same thing from me at least. I worry about structural deficits going into the future, so it's being careful of what we do now on the levy side. Because some decisions have been made to increase expenses. So what I'm not hearing is that our expenses are too high and we want to cut expenses. So far, the messaging has kind of been a little mixed that we want more expenses, but yet we want a lessen how to get paid for a little bit. So it is mixed messaging for staff and for people who are paying attention to it a little bit.
All of that, and some of that's by design at least from what I've heard. It's opportune time to get more and pay less, two or three.
Two or three.
There's smaller...at each end of that, the margins are smaller than they would have been otherwise.
And we have fund balance, and it's appropriate to use that in certain ways, right?
Yep.
Mark has talked about one-time expenses. I look at our CIP, and we have some levy support within the CIP. It's for equipment. So there's just under $700,000 that we're going to use levy, that's taxed dollars, to pay for equipment. And that's a reasonable, that's a good thing to do. We're paying cash for equipment instead of taking on debt. That's a really, that's a good thing. We could use cash on hand instead of levy. That's one way to reduce the levy. We can use some cash to pay for debt. But either way, those two numbers are still going to be there next year. So how do we pay for them next year, too, is as we make a decision on '25, consider '26 and '27 of... Where's the funding? Because the expense ain't going away under this idea. Jacob's got some ideas flowing that...
The first thing would be while home service 2.8 does look a rather responsible number, with the revale, it's actually closer to 18% in terms of real dollar terms.
Say that, I'm sorry.
It's closer to 18% in real dollar terms.
On the average bill.
An average tax bill will be closer to 18%.
To an average residential taxpayer.
Yeah, with the 14 million properties that Julie provided us in that spreadsheet, roughly equated to about an 18% jump on average. The concern that I have is where Matt lies, with structural deficits heading into future budget years. That is a concern that I have, but also in terms of backfilling some of the levy, Chris's idea, I really do like that I, you know, that concept. Where I want to know the most efficient way to do this would be, could we potentially advance some debt reduction in the debt servicing fund? So instead of taking the extra undisputed general fund balance dollars and just throwing them into separate programs to offset the levy, could we advance a little bit more of our debt servicing fund and see how far that brings things down essentially?
The one thing you want to take a look at is we've done debt reduction. We've advanced payment on some debt, and the reason we did it was because the rate that was out there from old debt was higher than rate of new debt. And so for paying off higher interest rates, that's a really, a very desirable thing. The current interest rates are about the highest they've been. I mean, they've been steady, although we probably might see a little bit of a dip in recent weeks. But we're still at a fairly high interest rate, so the debt we would pay off would actually be less than debt we would be taking on. So I don't know if you necessarily know.
And that's good, because those are the things that I don't know yet.
No, no, that's why, that's why it's a great discussion point. So part of, you know, so part of your option is, you know, if everybody could go to the first tab on budget overview, I don't know what page number it is, so just go to budget overview. Because this is where your levy is, and this is where you've got the wiggle room. If there's any wiggle room anywhere, this is the page you go to. I mean, well, but, you know, for example, we had already reduced the equipment fund by about a half million dollars. And part of it was knowing that the council was concerned about this. We could go more, but as the mayor said, that's, are you creating a structural deficit? If we were making a permanent change, saying, you know, we weren't going to use general fund money anymore, then you could, it'd be easier to make that decision. But we want to try to do more, as I say, down payment. I love paying cash for capital projects. So if we, if there's anything we can do to help lower our capital projects, you're biting off... I mean, you could do 700,000, but that's...I'm a little scared for you in that regard. Because next year, what do you fund those things that you should not borrow for? The mistake we were making when I first got here is we had 10-year-old trucks, and we were borrowing at 20-year...yeah. And I was like, whoa, stop the man. And so, well, the life of them are actually more like 15 years. It's like, no, they're not. They're dying after 10. It was real obvious they were. So we pumped the brakes on that. So we started to do this, and this was actually a good thing. So I'm just hesitant about doing it, but that's one. I just, that's just one. The debt service, I think Julie already took a look at that. Julie brought it up to Jim right here. I think we can cut 300,000. I mean, Julie, Julie gets the credit for that one. Julie said, "Could we just reduce that and have code transit work off of a fairly substantial fund balance?" And Julie's got other technical questions that I don't want to bore you with, but she's right on those, too. So it's like, could we...that's, I think, 300, just like that you could do. I feel confident, and I think Julie does. So that's one that's going to help you immediately. You could tweak, you can mess around with a little bit of the equipment. The debt service fund is out of money, so we can't tap into that anymore. Let's see. The other ones I still want to keep doing. Library, unfortunately, the challenge we have is, what we're talking about right here, the library already did. And they've drawn down their reserves, which is why we need to not replenish it, we need to keep it on an even keel from now on. But Julie, what other ones were you thinking about looking at this page?
Well, I went line by line to these budgets, and there are random ones that I thought we could increase. One of the ones that I really thought we could increase was the parking ticket revenue, and that's why I had reached out to police. But now they want to use that as the offset to get the sergeant. That was one of the ones that I was going to use to decrease the tax levy.
Well, as just a quick side note, as you keep going on that, in the past, we've usually, we've had some sort of like running, the running spreadsheet of, all right, here's all the enhancements that council said yes to, or here's the options that are still available, and the impact of each of those decisions from this point forward. Will you start that running? And that should come out to us on Friday of this week, hopefully. And then again, next week, after whatever decisions we make on Wednesday, too. But some of this is going to be, you're going to take a step forward and step, like you need to see though, every decision you make has an impact up and down. What's the actual picture being painted here? Just, I just want to make sure we're on the same page then, so they see these. Because to your point, okay, we can use that, but then now it just paid for something else, and so let's make sure we're on the same page.
Right.
It's been the same point twice.
Yeah, it'd be nice to expand it twice, yeah.
Most of the police's enhancement was already in the base budget.
Yeah.
All of the ambulance was in the base budget. So those, you don't have to struggle with, well, how are we going to pay for those? Julie already did that for you.
And that's basically the 1.3 that we're going up is those two decisions for the most part. Well, actually, one point, because with Jim's potential credit on transportation, it brings it down to one-ish. But that's roughly, those two decisions right there is the increase.
And the only one, only other one that sounds like I'm sure is the $70,000, which was a remainder offset for the police downtown Hobbie Street, right? If I was keeping track. There aren't many enhancements that we all said yay to so far.
I was undecided on if there was consensus on the park maintenance worker.
I guess I don't know. So a running total at some point, but we're not talking about huge swings, which is great.
Okay. And that's one that's on my radar to come back to before the end of the day. Making sure that we just, we get clear on anything we've said yes to so far. Paul, you got something going?
Yeah, so I guess, let me explain what I'm looking to do. I just don't know, maybe someone wants to grab the steering wheel and tell me which road to go down to do it. Okay? So it was brought to my attention yesterday, before we even left here, while we were talking about this issue, we had some self-proclaimed experts that said that we're all messed up, and we're doing this wrong, and we're going to pull the wool over people's eyes, okay? That was before we left the room, all right? So we can talk about 2% increase in the levy, and while we all understand that, and 2.8%, Matt, I agree with you 100% of it. It's absolutely reasonable. But the reality of that is, the average taxpayer sitting on the couch, when they get their tax bill, it's not 2.8% increase, it's 20%. And so we've got a bad reputation already when we came out and said, with the reevaluation, you can have a lower taxes. Some could be high, some lower. Well, it's going to be turning out that everyone's going to be hiring. So we got that reputation already. What I'm trying to do is mitigate the damage that we are going to cause, not maybe, but we are going to cause. So that's why I'm saying, however we can mitigate that percent increase by borrowing here... And I said, the fund balance is something that we have taxed already, that's there. We have more in that fund than the state or anyone else thinks is reasonable. And so if you've taxed me that already, I want to give you permission to do that. If you don't tax me more than the next year and keep that balance in there that you're not using, but you're taxing me more, and it's at 20%, I think that's unreasonable. So that's my soapbox. How to get to that mitigating, mitigating the punch in the nose is where I want to go.
And Matt, I can, let me piggyback for you, just to your next one. So to that point, Paul and I agree in that I'm not concerned about getting to a zero levy necessarily. And you're right, I'm completely okay with the work staff did and the budgets they presented here. So 2.3% is great.
Right.
Just operate, and let me be a novice for a second and not understand it. Before this sheet existed, the 37% of general fund equated to a 4.13 million dollar overage to get back down to the top end 30% of spec. So just for the sake of discussion, I'm a billion percent okay saying 4.13 million just offset the levy, but that's just me. Like, we talked about it previously. I'm that risk averse, where I'm okay with that. But I understand that that's not for everybody, because there are structural deficits that come with it. So for the sake of discussion, if we take 4.13 million dollars or 4 million dollars from a source that's available, because even if you do use this sheet to get to 16% in the low end of our spec, where 6.5 million, quote-unquote, available, right? So pretend it's 4 million dollars. Can that be used in a manner that doesn't create a structural deficit for 2026 and still lowers the rate to something nearing 812?
That would be...
That's the question.
Applying directly to...
Unless there's a better way.
Applying directly to debt service. It doesn't give you the full fix that I think Paul's talking about.
But I understand what you're saying.
How close?
Yeah. And that helps tell the story very, very much.
If you don't mind, and then where I'm wrong, hit me upside the head with two words for it. So, because Chris and I had a good conversation on this and confirmed some information with Julie earlier, because I know there's been different questions, especially the last several weeks and months, right? So one of the biggest things that I've heard, and please tell me that I'm wrong if I am, there's a big concern about the shift that occurred from commercial to residential within this last revale. And it happened because we're 100% at the residential side and 80-ish on the commercial, and it shifted. Had it been 100/100, had it been perfect on both sides of that, the tax rate would be $8.12 per thousand.
Yep.
We're currently standing at $8.45 per thousand with our current assessment scenario situation. So no matter what, there was going to be a shift. Residential far outpaced commercial over the last several years, and there was going to be a shift. Am I okay stating that the biggest concern is that 33 cents from not being at 100/100? Because if they had reported a couple of weeks, months ago, that commercial was perfect and residential was perfect, I'm not certain on where our argument would be today, or if there would be one at all.
There might not be one, and like we talked about, the problem isn't that there might not be one, the problem is that there is one. And that people do know that because...
Yes.
So yes, you hit the nail on the head. That is a billion percent correct.
So would it be okay to talk about, so the 33 cents from 8.45 to 8.12 represents a $2 million difference?
Right.
So right now, the budget is up 1.3.
Yep.
If you, I don't want to use the word "cut." If we didn't, if we reduced the levy compared to last year by 700,000, that's that $2 million swing. Excuse me, $2 million, yeah, $2 million swing, which gets you your 33 cents. So instead of going up 1.3, if we went down 700, that's your equalized number.
Yep, from 2020.
Correct.
Yeah.
So instead of formulae, I just thought you'd like a number that we could actually, if I'm hearing it right, potentially justifies $2 million less than this number. That would be, that would be using the equalized numbers, if they were perfect. If they were perfect right now, that's what it would be anyway, 8.12.
Yep, they'll never be perfect, but you need to be able to tell the people who are paying that bill that it increased for a reason. And that reason is a lot more sensible if the value were equalized, even though it wasn't and isn't.
And if it were, then you can explain that. And I'm all different spaces on the spectrum right now. And I'm not trying to make anyone happy, I'm just trying to make sure what we're talking about is clear, and that way, if we can walk out of here with direction, we don't have to make the decision of...
Where that comes from.
700 here. We don't have, we can. We can also give very clear direction to say, "This is what we'd like, figure out the most responsible way of doing it, report back to us as quick as possible." If, but I just want to make sure we're going down a path that there's consensus on before we would do that. Because I have ideas, but my ideas aren't perfect, and none of them, you know, each of us can pull things out of the air. But I want to say, I want to say have some consensus first before we say, "Here, go."
I think that's a better direction. If we say we want to get here, if you guys can come up with it, whether it's debt service, whether it's paying for cash for items, I mean, we can spitball around, you guys know better than we do. I think that's...
That's right. I said, someone grab the steering wheel and take it from me and...
When I do these things, Mark tends, the wheels start going, and steam starts coming out of Mark's ears at times. But he starts whispering because ideas start coming into his head as somebody sits over here and pontificates for a little while.
I'll just add, Mark, I'll just add to that, because again, somebody's got to be the least averse to risk in the room, and that's me at this point. Because I'm still going to operate as if that spreadsheet we saw for the first time yesterday doesn't exist until we change the policy. You can tell me I'm wrong or not, it doesn't matter.
No, you can do, no, you absolutely can do that. It's just more...
I understand.
This was just to keep an eye on what, honestly, what it was trying to do is demonstrate, and what I did, I just did a little jotting in my own. Because this was the first time I saw it, because I asked Julie to do it when I saw that. We are still $6 million over 16%.
Correct.
That's a good thing. I'm not saying go all the way to 16, but I'm saying, even if you accepted this, if you don't accept it, we're 4 million over 30%.
And what I was going to say is, if you, and that's great, and if we go forward in your absence and look at this as a policy change going forward, that's even better, because this probably should be in there. And I trust Julie when she says these things should be in there. But for this, for this discussion, for this year, for this book with the information we've had, this isn't in it yet. So my point is going to be, on the other end of the spectrum is me at this point. And to me, we're 12.7 million dollars away from 16%, because that's where we were. We're $4 million away from 30%, so whatever that number really is. So as far as I'm concerned, you can take $10 million and use it as creatively as you feel like. You won't. But you see what I'm saying? The perspective is saying, if that gives you even more variance in the magic, you want to work to lower that number to 8.12, I'm good with it.
How about if we did this? Because Matt made an earlier suggestion, which we should do. You know, the whole thing about enhancements and what the impact is, it really is a useful spreadsheet. So you can, you know, you can say, "Okay, if I do this, this happens, and it helps you guys do that." Additionally, we can come back with some options. I mean, just because it's options, there, as Matt said, there's no perfect solution here. But which things can you do that you're willing to do? I'm willing to do this, maybe I don't want to do that. It could be a combination of those things. We can, this, to me, is the page you want to look at to address what you guys are specifically concerned about. And then we can take a look at some other things.
And in keeping with that, where I kind of sit with Matt is where Paul and Chris are. It's the fact that there is going to be an impact after the revale. But if we can model it to the point where, if we can set the levy where we did have 100/100 revale, that's where I'd like to be. And what is the best way forward from that to lessen that impact? Because for me, 18% is just too much. And so I would, you know, if we, that means we have to go to debt service, that's fine. If that means we have to take it to the general fund, I understand. I am a little bit more risk averse about this kind of stuff, because they don't want us to have more structural deficit in the future. But what is the best way forward? I trust...
I trust your expertise on doing that, and that's where I'd like to be.
And I think to Chris's point, to get the conversation off of, we have this residential-commercial divide, I think is the key point. If we can start saying, no, residential property did develop in value, we all know this, right? I mean, we all know over the past however many years, residential property has skyrocketed, and commercial property has almost in some cases become useless and, due to COVID and some of those offices going out. But like, I think it would get the focus off of the differential.
It don't matter a lot this year, as we're seeing, because it does matter a lot this year, and it's going to matter a lot next year, and then it won't matter as much.
The reality of the situation is, we were put in a bad situation. We all know at this table, and I'm going to sound like a typical politician, it's not our fault. However, no, no, I want, you're not putting me in a funny...
You're not wrong.
Say to that citizen, trust me, I know you don't want to, but trust me, we fought like hell to mitigate the increase you were going to get because of some situations that the state wasn't... So, just trust us, we came up with some good stuff that we think is responsible and reasonable. We did some things that you don't do structurally every year, you don't do it. But because there were prior councils that had some money in a piggy bank, we got to use it. We taxed you, we're going to use that money, so we don't have to tax you as much this coming year. What happens, you know, in the next revaluation, that's a whole different story. But trust me, the circumstance that we are in now, we had seven members of the council and a great staff that put something together to make this bad situation eligible.
Carl, you've been holding back.
Oh, I just saw you.
He was, oh, another one, man.
Can we, Julie, we talked a little bit yesterday at lunch about kicking up the chart that has our, our target is 40% debt to equalize value. Because if the price tag, however we figured out, to get us to where we should have been is approximately $2 million, is what I'm hearing. Is that, is that...
Yeah.
Okay. We have a little bit more, and I want to do both, being able to look at Joe Voger, Joe Citizen, and Mary Citizen, and be able to say, we helped you this year to react. We reacted to a situation we inherited, we helped you this year, and we looked long-term, and it's going to help you every year now.
Seriously, you're talking about debt, paying down debt potentially as well?
Potentially.
So there's, there's two parts, while she's pulling that up, if you don't mind, please, me commenting at least. You and I agree on that that number hasn't been going down. The percentage has been going down of our debt allowance. But yet, the overall number, and to your point, I think it used analogy, we've got a credit card, and we just keep getting a bigger credit limit, is the analogy. We're not paying the debt down, we're just getting more and more capacity to spend, is a good analogy. The only, to Mark referenced earlier, I think to Jacob's question about front-loading some debt and things like that, the debt we basically have on the books now is pretty cheap, for the most part. There might be some stuff at the 10 and 9-year mark that might be a little bit... The last four or five years have been dirt cheap. We've been financing relatively inexpensively. To that point, it may not be about paying down old debt, but it may be about using cash, using cash for capital projects today, because the debt is too high, and cash is more, the cash is king right now. It could be to that, and that has done, your long-term effects of not taking that debt on, and then increases, it reduces your debt service requirements into the future as well. By every dollar, you...
You're who you are.
By every dollar.
I know you typed in my username.
That's what I was trying to ask, when we were talking about the fire training facility. I mean, if we...
If we don't spend 7.7 this year on that...
If we didn't spend 7.7 on that, I mean, is that, what's that going to look like budget-wise? If we're just completely, we're not backfilling with new projects, we're just completely taking 7.
Doesn't help us in '25 at all, because we don't pay anything in '25, but it helps us in '26 on out.
Sure.
You're talking over 20 years, you know, that's what, half a million, what, 400? With interest, you know, half a million dollars a year plus.
And what's our magic number of borrowing a year? We, I know we were at 18, we went up to like 20.
20-ish?
Yeah.
Was, there's a whole lot of "ish" in there?
Of course, yeah.
20-ish? Sorry, I've talked long enough while she pulled up. I was hoping the, yeah. Oh, nothing like, nothing like all of us, you know, just watching you work. It's not, it's not stressful at all while we watch you click around.
And it makes more sense to pay certain capital projects with cash, and that's cheaper to borrow. The rates are going to be higher today, because of that, Chris.
And thank you all for doling me, I love spreadsheets, so I...
They're better than PowerPoints, so.
I wish we had a similar spreadsheet for where you guys want to go with the next one, because I think that's something we want to look at. When you see the enhancement, when you say, oh, okay, if we do this, we do that.
We're close on the next one too, though, I think. I mean, that's where you have the magic sauce, you do, I mean, you're good enough at it where you can put the pieces together.
Well, that's the only one, I don't want you to live the next person in a Daryl situation, where they come and go, what did this guy do before he left?
It's not just this year, it's not just next year, it's the trust for the next 30.
I'll be the guy to pop a shop complaining about the...
Probably going to Facebook a lot.
It's property tax.
Wow.
350%.
So, two parts, before she starts talking and diving into it, do you know, we, is Diane... So like Diane should be now-ish.
At 2.45, I asked her.
Okay, oh, you're right, it's only 2.35, I apologize, just keep going.
You guys are having some fun, this is like a great...
Well, this is a good conversation, and I don't want to kill it, but I also want to be respectful of the staff that's showing up and keeping them on, keeping their trains on time too.
Jan just saw you guys were having fun, she came in to join you. All right.
So we have lots of different, this is one of those spreadsheets we talked about at our CFP workshop. So this is where we look at our debt and how it eventually gets into that debt levy. So, what I was hearing was, if we take on less debt, say like in 2025, we reduce our proposed debt issuance by, say, move it down to 16 million, or?
Take it to 14, because that would be cutting fire completely in 2025.
Okay.
Seven and a half. You're in read-only on this one, because you're above.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, my keyboard wasn't working.
Oh.
It started.
Did that go down?
If you do it on that one, if you don't read on your...
It's a problem.
Live version.
There we go.
Let me tell it.
So, then we go over the rate impact, and you can see the changes in the rates, so.
So we still have our debt balance going up.
Right.
Yeah. About a half million.
But what we're trying to show is how much of the tax rate is going to have to be debt. So over here, these numbers are decreasing. So, on this screen, you have the 14 million, on my screen, you still have the 21 and a half. So, for example, when you're looking over at like 2026,
Closer if you can't see.
Up here, you're looking at about $2.40, whereas on my spreadsheet, you're at $2.48. So it's saving you about 8 cents per $1,000 assessed value.
And drop.
And, yes.
See, into the future.
So, as you reduce an amount of debt, it will save future tax rates, it just, you won't see that immediate benefit that year.
You won't realize it as much as...
Right.
Yeah, so the other thing I worry about though is, we're taking 7.7 from here to get to this, just that was, you know, for the fire train, that's going to hit us at some point.
Some point we would take on that debt to do the project if we chose to move forward, yeah.
I'm looking at more just, so, 4 from the 6 million that we're over, that we have just, wait, what? Before we get into all the other enhancements, that would be something that we have to do. 2 million for immediate relief, however that's figured out, gives us 4. That's the part I really want to commit to.
Paying down more debt.
Or, not paying down, but just acquiring less or whatever.
Okay.
Now, the 7.7 also is this year, but the reason I'm not figuring in is because someday that's going to come.
Okay.
So issuing less debt is going to save us interest payments?
Oh yeah, a ton.
And improve the ratio.
A ton, well, not a ton, but a ton enough, yeah.
Julie, that's the first thing, Joel, is you're concerned about that ratio, right, at one point?
We, I was...
At the first workshop?
I was concerned about how much of the debt amount we're using in the levy limit worksheet.
Yep.
So that's the columns S and T, so that's the, won't change that.
Yep, I get that, but...
With equalized values going up, that debt ratio, that's been the concern the last handful of years. That as equalized value goes up, it's less and less of a concern.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's basically like the mayor said, it's basically when you get your credit card statement and saying, ooh, you have a higher limit.
My financial position didn't change.
Right.
I just, I had the ability to spend.
That was your grand score a lot.
I did, but I just...
It improves the position to a degree, too.
Right.
We've been, we have been focused, past councils have been focused on that number.
Yep.
We haven't lost sight of the total debt, but that wasn't the focus for many years. And it may need to be at some point going into the future, but we, in the last year or so, we have been at a position of...
Well, because the equalized value's been shooting up.
Well, just that also, we know we have capital needs, we have facility capital needs. So it's that timing of, you can't have your cake and eat it too. The debt, the number can't go lower and take on $100 million in debt over 10 years. It just, the math don't work. So we, making a judgment, you know, there was a judgment made of, we need to do these things to our facilities, so our debt number is going to either hold or go up. And then once we get to that tipping, once we get to a point, then it's time to work on that again. And that's, that's where we were 10 years ago, when we were at 75% of our debt capacity. Council spent, because there was projects that needed to be spent on, and then, okay, then we had to pump the brakes.
We were actually lowering our outstanding debt in dollars. We were...
Significantly.
It was going down.
Yeah.
And we were achieving it with no increase in equalized value. Once equalized value started to ramp up, then our rate plummeted. I mean, our goal, our debt management goal has been reached, our 2030 goal has been reached already. That is not a problem, that's in our rearview mirror now. The one that Julie's got her eyes focused on, which is the new percentage to keep the ball on is, you know, we're, look how quickly we're getting towards 100%. We got to stop, you know, we, we got to mind that all the time. And that was, and that was one of Russ's last words, is you guys got to watch this now. You know, and it was because, number one, we got debt covered, but this levy limit worksheet is just, we haven't had to worry about it, look at that, 2016, we were living a charmed life. At 30%, we had nothing to worry about. Now, this is a real problem. Just so you know, a lot of other cities have been wrestling with this issue for years. We've always had to worry about expenditure restraint, but never about this. Now look, we're, this is, this is where we got to keep our eye on the ball.
So you've asked us for appetite. I'll tell you point blank, yes to getting creative with $2 million for offsetting the assessment error.
Difference, whatever.
Getting it to where it should have been. Yes to borrowing less this year significantly if we don't do the 7.7, but at least, you know, using some of the general fund overage.
General fund to pay for some of the capital projects. We're going to take...
And we managed a couple here along the ways too, so it's not as significant, nowhere near the 7.7.
But that's where the updated worksheets will come into play later in this week. So even this one, if you can give us a...
Projected borrowing?
Yeah, the projected borrowing, to make sure that they're aware of what their decisions will or won't do to that as well.
That is my opinion.
It sounded similar, you guys weren't talking about the debt side too much, it was more levy side.
I don't care. Yeah, there's benefits to the debt side also. Or like I said, if you, if you find a need or a want or desire to spend even more, presume that we're on whatever sheet we're on, and if that makes sense now to help any of this, I'm all for it. But the $8.12 is the first goal, the second is whatever else you can come up with. That's why I would say roughly, for me, if it, if this means that you do take her off the debt servicing fund, that's fine, I'm not going to be so debt-focused. My best main goal is to get down to 8.12. And it doesn't really matter to me, even how we get there, I am going to be a little bit more of a deficit hawk, but at the same time, if you can get down to 8.12, it's a little bit of general, for a general benefit.
Okay. So I'm hearing a lot on the 8, getting down to 8.12, that's 2 million in levy relief, and then options on the other side.
Without screwing us next year.
Well, that's, and that's...
I think we should do options, that's not a serious... Our goal will be to get you towards 8.12.
Yep.
When you see the different options, you might say, all right, you get your point, maybe, you don't go 8.40, you want to get from 8.45 to 8.12. Do you get to 8.25, do you get to 8.30? I don't know, we'll show you what we can do.
To do that.
I had a couple ideas that I want to still talk to Julie about.
And the other part is, I want, I want Julie to paint the clearest picture possible for council of the impact of that next year. That, and to be prepared, I don't know what it's going to be, what her message will be, but be prepared for that. Here's, here's where our gap could be next year, just so you're, it's eyes wide open on decision-making, right? So now also, we don't get to this point next year, you're like, I didn't know that was going to be the impact, I wouldn't have done that, right? So expect that in the messaging as well, that here are some things you can expect to possibly see next year. Just be aware, I would hope that that would be a part of it.
Yeah. I think my biggest concern, and just from the years that I've done municipal budgeting, is with levy limits and with expenditure restraint, adding 10 FTEs in one budget cycle is extremely hard to swallow. So, right off the bat, if we approve the eight firefighters and the two for police, that is going to be hard to swallow for the next few years. That's not adding personnel to any other budget, which, that's still on the table, we haven't decided that. To me, that already kind of sets you up at a deficit, deficit for future years, as in, we got to find cost savings, and we probably have to turn down FTE requests in future years, unless we get really creative, which I'm all for getting creative and trying to find ways, but, because I know there's the need out there for multiple departments, I just, my history has been, it's very hard the following year after you add a lot of FTEs.
Especially, and there's a decision made that the firefighters are a half a year this year, next year is a full year budget impact.
Correct, so that's already baked in.
So the half year is baked in here, but the full year wasn't. Next year, that's, and even on the police side, right? I know Mark, I think Mark has given authorization that they can start a process soon, but the real impact's not going to be, you know, they're not going to get hired till, come out more till May-June, whatever it is maybe, to fill those.
So part of my comment to the 2 million is I might increase the vacancy savings, which, that's a one-year band-aid. But we'll see what other ideas we can come up with.
We have faith in you.
Yep, and I can tell you, just for perspective, I am, I'll remain really optimistic that what happens with the next revaluation does curb some of that discrepancy between the makeup of the two things. So, for perspective, I think had this been a discussion already at an equalized value in the two portions of the categories, right? And this was 2.3% with these numbers for these people and these FTEs, I don't think any one of us would have had it or not. The only, the only major factor here is that there is a discrepancy, and it is, it's a, knock on wood, we shouldn't say it out loud, unjinx me, Mr. Unjinxer. It'll undo itself when we correct the discrepancy in the values, it will, it has to. I know, you don't have to answer that either, but...
That's my hope as well.
There's no, there's no reason to think that it shouldn't, because we won't be that far out of spec the second year.
All right, so, we didn't take a break, we kept talking a bunch, so I want to push through. Diane's in the back chatting with Fitz, I'd like to bring Diane up for a brief clerk budget.
You want to go real quick?
Yeah, and then we'll go into museum, and then the rest will be council discussion to make sure we wrap up cleanly, and we don't leave the room until any direction that we want to give collectively is given. Hoping to still be out at 4:30, if not earlier, that would be...
That's the hour on the mirror.
Oh boy.
I didn't hear a second, and that motion fails.
Can I sit any back?
You can take any spot you want.
I'm sitting right here, because I'm only, I'm only going to be here for five minutes.
In fact, you know what, take Paul's, that'll be just fine. You're welcome.
Thanks for squeezing me in. Basically, I just want to ask if you guys have any questions about anything, I'd be happy to ask. Pretty straightforward.
Do we know where we're-
The clerk's budget, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn your hymnals to page 50.
The clerk's budget is the only one that I'm looking at, I will increase in, and that's to focus on some employee training for next year. We do have a new deputy clerk, so I would like her to see some training, clerk training, things like that. But otherwise, everything's pretty straightforward. Elections will be minimal next year, we only have two, maybe, well, we have one at least April and maybe February, depends on where everything costs. But, um, I think that's it.
Best budget yet.
Yep. Gold star, gold star.
Chronicle.
Clerk's, is Clerk Institute in here?
That's either myself or, yeah, it's in there.
It's in there.
It's myself or Cheryl, we're gonna figure out who's going, what track, because they offer different tracks for different people. And that's what the training is definitely for. There's the clerk's conference, too, that I would like to attend, considering I didn't have a chance this year or last year. So that's-
Yeah, that, that's super important for her.
Yeah.
You know, she, she came from the non-clerk's world, she's assumed the duties, but, you know, she's been running without any of that, that knowledge base that-
I gotta tell you, this hands-on, this hands-on stuff is good knowledge.
It sure is.
I am learning a lot, so, that's basically it. Like I said, elections is minimal, we don't anticipate having to purchase any machines. We do a lot of our maintenance, uh, machines over at 19 for our big ice units, the image cast units that you actually put your ballot in. We maintain them there. We have Phil, our guy from Dominion, come out, check them out, and he said, as long as you keep them up to date, they should be good to go, so we're not anticipating purchasing anything, and-
Yeah, next year will be the lightest year in the elections budget in a four-year cycle. This is the highest, next year is the lowest.
Yep, and this year's gonna be nice and high. Because, because of the early absentee voting that we have going on, we didn't expect this turnout, so there will be a little extra cost. We have to order more envelopes, even when you're doing in-person absentee voting.
Still need the envelopes.
Yep, we need to, I'm gonna actually roll myself a note to order some envelopes, so.
Are the gears spinning a little bit better over there, I mean, things working out a little bit better?
Oh, yeah, definitely, it's, it's just-
Are the lines coming down?
A little bit, but it just voted turnout. It, on an, even on a great day, it's an average of two minutes per voter to process and get through. By the time they get in, you look up their phone number or their address with their voter ID, print out the envelope, you, I've got it, initial the envelopes, things like that, it, it's a good one-minute to two-minute process.
And that'd be the same if it was a here and it's field.
Exactly.
Thank you.
But it would be less if you just showed up on election day, because you don't have to fill out the envelope.
This is true.
The envelope doesn't have to get printed out. If, all they do is check your, check your ID, check your name, and say, "There's your ballot."
Yep.
Go for it. It is so much more efficient to go on election day. But it's more convenient for people to go now, and-
This is true.
And if they gotta work on Tuesday, you know, that, that's what we're there for. But if, if I was giving advice to a friend, my advice to my friend would be, go to your local polling place on election day.
Exactly.
It'll be quicker.
I know that you have some, some of, you have been in contact with some voters in regards to curbside voting. On election day, it is state statute, we have to offer it. I have our polling places staffed with people. Early absentee voting, it's not required, but because of the volume, I don't have the staff to offer it. So I'm asking people, if they could go on election day, we have people available at the polling locations to do the curbside voting if anyone needs them.
Diane, how do you feel staffing-wise, in terms of the number of poll workers you have, which is a couple of years that you've been doing that this year? Have you been having any good responses overall?
I, I am very confident in our polling locations. Everybody who has worked, some worked February, some worked April, maybe took August off. I am very confident, we have anywhere from 10 to 12 people at each polling location.
It's very terrible.
It is, it's very good.
So that's where the curbside is gonna be possible, because you can, you can afford to take two people outside to, to help somebody at the curb.
Exactly, 'cause last, like, on Tuesday, Wednesday, over at early absentee, if there are only two people there, we'd have to shut everything down to do curbside, so we just don't have the capability.
Do wanna say thank you, been appreciating the email updates on the turnout.
Yep, I'll keep you posted, I'll probably get a couple.
We appreciate it, I think it's interesting, first off. I think we can agree that this will probably be the highest turnout vote in all of our lifetimes, and I hope-
I agree.
As many turnout as possible on, on next Tuesday, and, or before. But it's been, it's been great to see the numbers coming in, just, obviously, it was a council discussion earlier in the year on extra hours and all that stuff, and I don't need to get into that, but I'm glad to see the numbers are there, and people are using the service.
Well, yesterday, we were only open till 4:30, and we serviced 765 people. So we, and we did have five people there sporadically throughout the day.
And how many hours was that? Just to give you an idea of the-
Oh, I'm sorry, yesterday was seven, it was later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you had 700 yesterday for your-
765 from 8:30 a.m. till 7:00 p.m.
So like 11 hours.
Yep.
So, and you said 770?
765.
So 770 divided by 11, so-
70 now.
Yeah, 70 people an hour, so one, more than one a minute. That's awesome.
Sorry, Mark, the last time we were open on a Saturday, what did we say the number was, zero or seven people?
Um, yeah, it was very minimal.
And this is 400?
And it, well, and it also depends on the election.
For sure.
But it's nice, but it's nice to know we made the right decision this time, because it wasn't three, it was 400, and that counts.
Yeah, and when you take that, that was only four hours, that's about 100 an hour.
Yeah.
So no, you guys, you can say I told you so, right?
That's what I keep saying, like, "Why are you guys here?" Go to your polling place on, on Tuesday, it'll be slick.
Who's Caroline there Saturday or no?
She was not.
Will you tell her how well that went?
I, oh, I should.
She gave me such an earful about how we don't do the opening on Saturdays.
I will.
It was unrelenting, in person.
It was difficult, because Saturday is usually the day that we can do our public test.
I know, I get her.
So we have to test all of our equipment, too, so I, I was there-
I'm not saying we need to be right, and she needs to be wrong, I'm just saying.
The girls locked at 3:30, I stuck around till 6:30 with two other poll workers, so. We, and everything came through, all our equipment works well, so, we're all good.
I was wondering what you guys were doing there, I almost, so Joe and I live right over by it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I was gonna stop in there, I'm like, "If they're still there, I'll go vote."
Why are they there?
I can, I can look at it with binoculars in my house. I scope out the lines, they've been too long every time.
No, too long, that's what some people are, I drove by, it was kinda short, so I sat there.
So I might do a day of, then, that's, I usually vote ahead of time, but day of's quicker.
With the Badger books, the check-in will be, it'll be seamless and, and real quick, so.
Thank you for everything you and your team have done.
Yep.
We're doing our best, we're just doing what we can, but you're welcome.
All right.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
She gets off on the Wednesday the 6th, right?
What was that?
Guys, like, you get off on Wednesday the 6th after, after your election, like, for our budget.
You're still counting them, right?
I don't even wanna know what type of count it's gonna weigh, we're gonna have to list 10,000 ballots, but, thank you.
Thank you very much, remember, you gotta, you gotta call them out.
You're on the way, stop.
Museum's up next. Save the best for last. The floor is yours when you're ready.
All right, yeah, you do. For those of you who haven't met Teresa Books, she's our administrative assistant, she has everything, she, Teresa Books keeps our books. And so, so she's, she is, works very closely with myself, previous directors on the budget, so having her here is, is a wonderful help to me, so.
Are you gonna hire, like, Thomas Curator, and like-
I, I mean, if I cross the name in the application, slide that right to the top. So, the museum presents a budget for three funds, the operating, the membership fund, and the collections fund. So it looks like we start on page 189 with the membership fund, and it kinda bounces around, around between the three. I don't, if you wanna start on the operation, operating budget, that's on 205. The museum arts and culture board, the MAC board, as I'll refer to it, oversees and approves two of these budget funds, that's the membership fund and the collections fund. So we met in September, and I presented the budget for those funds, and they have moved forward in approving those. These funds often work together to enable the museum to accomplish its strategic initiatives and advance its mission. The museum fits into the strategic plan goal of enhancing the quality of life, services, and assets. The museum mission is, just to remind everybody, because it's newer, it was implemented last year, the mission is to preserve and promote history, art, and culture for the Oshkosh residents and visitors by stewarding collections, creating educational experiences, and providing access to the unique heritage of the Lake Winnebago region. So, since our budgets kind of all work together, I wanna review some of our accomplishments throughout the last year, and then talk about some of our goals. This year, we hosted a schedule of programming celebrating the centennial anniversary of the museum, including adult enrichment programs, a exhibition that highlighted the history of the museum and the Sawyer family, who gifted the city and citizens of Oshkosh with the museum structure. And, and we also unveiled new interpretation throughout the historic Sawyer home. We completed renovation of second floor, of our second floor rotating flexible gallery space, Waldwick Gallery. Its inaugural exhibition will be an encore presentation of our award-winning exhibition Helen Farnsworth Mears, A Genius of Wisconsin, that's slated to open next Saturday, November 9. In addition to the Waldwick Gallery, we, we have or are in the process of completing a number of facility projects, including installation of freight doors for the Waldwick Gallery, exterior masonry repair and restoration, a comprehensive upgrade to the security, security camera system, and the design of new exterior signage. So I just wanna take a moment, because I know John Urban mentioned some of these facility projects, they've, I feel like they've taken up residence at the museum, I've offered them offices at this point. But I wanted to commend the collaborative efforts with administrative and general services and facilities on these projects, so John Urban, Mike Blank, Teri Smith, Holly McGrady, Scooter Kussman, and Tony Newman have really been excellent to partner and coordinate with these, on these projects. So having those experts on hand to talk to Scooter about the complicated lighting, electrical system at the museum is just a real, is just really nice to have when we're working on these types of projects at the museum. We continue to strengthen and refine educational program offerings and provided admission-free field trips to approximately 700 Oshkosh area school district students during the 2023-2024 academic year. So that's just OASD, that doesn't include outside students and field trips as well, but those are, OASD are admission-free in our goal to be accessible and provide teachers and students with learning opportunities at the museum in, in real time. Building on the success and feedback during our annual Dia de los Muertos celebration, this year, we will be offering enhanced educational interpretation throughout the museum grounds. This was part of an internship project with a public history graduate student at UW Milwaukee. The intern also serves as a bilingual outreach educator for the Milwaukee Public Museum. We will also have a Spanish interpreter on site. So again, enhancing a really popular event and just making it more accessible to the Spanish-speaking community and more meaningful to everyone. This past May, OPM successfully launched a new outreach program called the Historic Oshop, where attendees could take guided tour, guided tours of a number of historic buildings around the city. Because of the program's popularity, we'll be offering it again in 2025. We're already locking down the locations, we're really excited about that. We completed and fully launched the museum's new brand identity, including all the marketing materials and collateral. As a continuation of our efforts to grow and enhance our front-of-house operations, we have upgraded all of our museum store furniture. So it's no longer like a patchwork quilt of tables and, and stools and things that we've had over the years. We have a nice, continuous look in our store to promote our merchandise, and again, we want to enhance our front-of-house operations. So it's part of that effort. We continue to fund salary and personnel costs for several positions, and that ranges from full-time, part-time, LTE. And these are through OPM's Board Governed Trusts and Funds. So a few examples are the DeRoe Registrar, that's funded by the DeRoe Trust. The curator of Education position is funded through some of our, about $50,000 of that position is funded through our trusts and funds, education assistant, education coordinator, visitor services, and a collections assistant dedicated to our NAGPRA efforts. So we were really delighted to launch that LTE collections assistant position to update our records associated with and governed by NAGPRA. For those of you who aren't familiar with NAGPRA, it's the Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act. It was very timely, we approved it last year, part of last year's budget, but recently, earlier this year, there were some updates to the federal law, so it worked out really well to have this collections assistant come aboard to help us increase our efforts. So they help ensure compliance with the federal law and explore opportunities for ongoing physical and cultural care of the, of the collection that we care for. And particularly with the updates to NAGPRA, cultural care is a big part of it, that's a new part of it. So we take physical care, but this is specific care for the well-being of that collection, so consulting on appropriate storage treatment, handling of, of items that would be covered under NAGPRA, incorporating and accommodating Native American traditional knowledge in the storage, treatment, or handling of human remains or cultural items. And, and it's really important that we have that culturally informed stewardship, because there are very specific practices, there are restrictions that we don't have the knowledge of. We know how to physically take care of these objects, but culturally, specific care, we need to be mindful of and incorporate as well. We have also successfully completed the move of our off-site collections to a new off-site storage facility, so we're Diane's neighbor. We have started the commission of a textile piece by a Native American artist, a contemporary Native American artist. We began planning for collections rationalization, which is an upcoming strategic plan initiative. We continue to grow our Wisteria Circle donor support for our Tiffany interiors, and hosted collections experts for the Tiffany interiors to aid in our stewardship efforts, as well as raise the profile of this rare community treasure. So we had a big year, we had a lot going on, but we also have a lot of goals for the upcoming year. We would like to continue design phases for our long-term exhibition, Deep Roots, Growing City. This will continue exploring the area's history from where we left off at, in People of the Waters, it's really at the fur trade, and that's not the end of the story of this region, and there's a lot of stories to tell, so we would like to continue with the design efforts for that. This will be the final long-term exhibition that will be renovated as part of a comprehensive renovation plan to all of our core gallery long-term exhibitions that started in 2014. So, in all, in all my years being in the museum field, I've never seen so much change and so much investment in core galleries, one after another, so it's a real testament to the support that we've been able to receive in the, to update those galleries. Some of them were getting a little tired and, and needed some rest, so it's been, it's really been really great to, to see this continue. We plan to continue to fund and host appealing visiting exhibitions, including in 2025 Tiffany's Gardens in Glass from the New Stock in New York, Nature is Muse, using, using loans of Tiffany artwork from the prestigious Dree House collection in, in Chicago. And we will continue to develop and fund in-house rotating exhibits that feature OPM regional history collections. We plan to purchase and implement new visitor, or, sorry, a new volunteer software to further professionalize our volunteer program, and also plan to hire a consultant to assist with redeveloping our membership program for the growth, for the goal to grow our, our membership fund, which is a really critical fund to our operations. We would like to increase marketing efforts to continue to create greater awareness and support for the museum. We continue to refine and expand our out- We continue to refine and expand our outreach through partnerships with community groups and with city departments on projects that promote and steward cultural heritage. So an example of one that was coming up, we partnered with the Parks Senior Center to write a grant to the Wisconsin Arts Board, Creative Communities. And this, we received the grant, and we are partnering with them on developing programming that highlights Native American history, art, and culture. Another example is working with the Fire Department to develop a small exhibit in their new Fire Training Center. Again, really injecting history in all of these spaces and collaborating with other city departments on these types of projects. We will continue to fund salary and personnel costs for several positions, including the NAGPRA Collections Assistant. We have requested support from the MAC Board to add additional Visitor Services support through another Visitor Services position. Currently, we have two Visitor Services positions with full-time staff assisting with coverage. Having a third person will allow greater flexibility among Visitor Services staff and would be more cost-effective and efficient than having full-time staff dedicate working hours to this area of operations, especially through the staff transitions that we've been experiencing. It's been really tough for full-time staff to jump in and cover. So if you ever want to see someone really uncomfortable, come see our Exhibit Tech, Greg, working the front desk. So we'll give him a break, let him work on his amazing skills at fabricating exhibitions, mounts, and installing, and really have dedicated staff to that front-of-house operations. Again, that's been something that we haven't done as much of, and that is a real, there's a lot of opportunity to generate revenue if we really invest in our front-of-house operations. This will have no levy impact, since the MAC Board approved funds to support this position. We will also continue to fund preservation efforts by purchasing minor equipment to care for and maintain the collection. So a couple of examples, a specialized vacuum to aid in the care of the collection, and a new camera that will be used for ongoing documentation. And we will also continue to fund outside expert assessments for the collection, which includes conservation, tribal visits or assessments, and other specialists that allow for the museum to continue its commitments to collection stewardship activities that align with standards and best practices. So that's my spiel. We didn't have many changes to the budget. We're staying pretty flat with not much levy impact. A couple of things to note, we really tried to balance some of our operating budget by moving some underutilized funds and putting it towards like marketing, again, raising our profile, getting people in the doors, and raising our admissions. We've also had sort of a low period of time with admissions revenue. We're a little bit behind target with that, as well as our store merchandise revenue. Because of the second floor being closed, people have been waiting to renew their membership when the museum's open and available, as well as, you know, we just haven't had as strong visitation because we haven't been hosting visiting exhibitions that also help bring in people in the door. So we're a little bit behind target there, but that's why we also want to increase some marketing efforts to raise the profile and showcase what we have to offer. So with that, I will leave it to some questions. I moved through that quickly.
Well done. Questions for the museum?
This is kind of not so much budgetary, but more operational. While you're here, how is the search for an archivist going?
Well, we're waiting to, until our, we named an assistant director, chief curator, Emily Rock. She was promoted from within. She's currently on maternity leave. We're waiting until she arrives back from maternity leave in November to, since that position will be the supervisor of the archivist. So she's aware we posted the position. We've had enormous response. I just said, hold off, give me a couple of weeks until I can start kind of weeding through. But the last time we had an archivist search, we also had a very strong response. So we will be going through a lot of applications. So good, I guess? I think great?
Good to hear. The next thing that I have is, let me just, CIP here, I don't think this is in their CIP right now, but seeing that the Tiffany windows, and I guess just for the people listening at home, there's only one other place in the country where there are Tiffany windows, and that's Boston?
So, yes, 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 mostly. So the Oshkosh Public Museum, the Historic Sawyer Home, is one of two original commissions of interiors done by Tiffany Studios that exist in the world. The other two are not original commissions, they are redesigned. One is the Mark Twain Home, and another is a private residence in Seattle. The residence that Councilmember Floem is mentioning is another original commission. It's the Ayer Mansion in Boston. It was recently removed from public accessibility and is now up for private sale. So that makes the Oshkosh Public Museum the only remaining original Tiffany commission of interiors, including those windows are unique to that home, were made for that home in the world. And so it's not just, I mean, it's a community treasure, it's a state treasure, it's a, I mean, it is a global treasure. It is incredibly unique. Having that Tiffany expert here earlier in the year to confirm that, so the Tiffany Wisteria Arch that you see when you walk in, she thinks it predates the Wisteria windows that were in Tiffany's own home. And the landscape window, which is just gorgeous, she thinks was one of her kind. She's never seen one like it. So it's incredibly unique, all the wall coverings, all that was selected by the interior. So you're walking through that home, you're walking through a piece of incredible American art that does not exist elsewhere. So, yeah, yes.
Yes. I kind of just have to tell off that's kind of more of a fun topic to people. The other thing is the Carriage House. And I was looking toward that, including the Council of Nichols, just kind of looking at the future of that building, and I was like, there's nothing in the CIP here, but I know you have some ideas.
Yeah.
And given some of the other things that we see, I know that the reserve storage for some of the museum items on the East River does not have any fire support.
Right.
So I know that creates viability risk based on how we ensure that. So I guess kind of moving forward, my question for you would be, when do you anticipate when the search in some cases comes to the CIP? We have a ton of needs, obviously, but, you know, how much of this do you think you could privately fund it versus how much would you need from the city in terms of your ideas for the Carriage House itself? And the museum itself, and all the other organizations and that is number one. Then the Carriage House is next on the list.
Well, the front, actually, the entrance was a little bit before that. So that way, some of our concerns at the museum is accessibility. We don't have ADA-accessible bathrooms. That's something we'd like to address with renovating our front entrance, offering better ADA accessibility and amenities, and just making sure that is more serviceable to the public. And then followed by the Carriage House. I think when the CIP came out, I don't know if the years go, 10 years? I thought I saw it for 2030, because we were talking about a new storage facility. Of course, it stops at 2029.
And the detail pages, when we look through the CIP, it goes on 10 years, but the summary pages in the budget book are five years. If you want, I can double-check, but I think you're right about 2030.
I think right now it's slated for 2030. As you toured the, like so many other departments, we're at capacity. The Carriage House is a beautiful structure. It is absolutely beautiful. I love it. But I don't love it for the care and stewardship of collections, especially when we're talking about caring for Native American collections and offering specific cultural care. I think that it should be a priority to have a dedicated purpose-built storage facility and maybe utilize the Carriage House for maybe increased programming, maybe revenue-generating space in the future. Our footprint isn't going to grow much, so using what we have and maximizing it is where we're looking now. So putting the collection into a purpose-built facility in the future would be a priority. It would offer better care, more sensitive care for the collection. But also, we have one programming space at the museum. We have one room. And it is, I think, the capacity is about 40 people. And so that's where all of our field trips go. That's where all of our programs happen. That's our only programming space. So if we could look strategically at a beautiful building, a short building like the Carriage House, for maybe increased access by the public, that could be potential for more programming and, like I said, more revenue generation. And then as well, in addition to that, offering better stewardship for our cultural heritage. So, yeah, I mean, that's, we've really started that conversation. I know we assessed a property earlier, analyzed a property. It did not work out, but I think it's really important, if we hope to gain reaccreditation, to really look at our stewardship of our collections intensely and really analyze it for, because we sign up to keep these in perpetuity. And having a dedicated space that is for that, I think would be a future priority. So it's in the plans, it's currently earmarked for that year, but that can certainly change. As far as funding goes, I think it's absolutely an appealing, fundable project. I think having the Carriage House potentially be accessible by the public, I think a lot of people love to use that space. It's beautiful. So I think it's a really appealing funding opportunity as well. But, I mean, it's going to take a little bit to get there as well. And as far as the front entrance, we do have a capital campaign started for building modifications, so we plan on contributing to that project as well.
Good to know. Thank you.
I can sense your passion so much, and I love it.
Oh, thank you so much!
Have you taken a tour? No, I've enjoyed lots of tours I've taken. This is going to sound really bad. The basement at the museum is my favorite part, quite honestly.
Really?
It really, I should not, hold on, hold on. I should not be judging artwork or anything like that. I'm completely unqualified. I enjoy all the old photos. I enjoyed the look back of Oshkosh back in the day, and, you know, I really enjoy that, and that's where a lot of the, that's where a lot of the best ones are housed. It's also outside of our council chambers, that wall. Some of the best, some of the best old-time photos of Oshkosh, and that's where you see a lot of them, and that's why that's my favorite space. But I can sense it, I think we can too, and I appreciate it a lot.
Well, I'm glad. I consider myself lucky, and I'm honored to be able to do the work I get to do for the citizens of Oshkosh and for the community as a whole. I really, you know, want that space to be welcoming for all. I want as much of the collection to be accessible, and I want to make sure that we are good stewards of it. So, thank you. I just want to let you know, though, speaking of old photos, the corridor space around the new Waldwick Gallery, we're planning to do a rotating photo exhibition as well. Since, people do really love that.
It's just, you know, it's old times, you know, just what it was, what it is now, and, you know, what happened between, you know? So I appreciate that.
So we'll have more.
Glad to hear it.
We'll take you out of the basement, onto the second floor.
Excellent. Is there anything else for museum from council or staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does council need to stretch their legs a little before we wrap up a couple of conversations? Are you guys good to push through?
Good to push.
So, two things that remain on at least my calendar, or at least my to-do list, is talk about, there's the to-be-determined-for-funding on the CIP. There's only three items, so I'm going to start there if you don't mind. First one is Fernal Ave, which, there's a handout that got passed around. That's a biggie. If you're looking, it looks like the way they got it broken up, the first column on the left is what it's going to cost, which seems to be higher than what the budget was, potentially?
We could ask James to come up and explain that, because that's...
Actually, can we do that, and then we'll do this one last, maybe? Would you mind doing that, reach out?
Sure, I'll shoot them an email.
Okay. So then, we'll jump. So there's Farmington workforce. I think Mark referenced some other potential funding sources for that one. It's three, a little over 300,000. There's some workforce...
And that's just for, like, planning and...
Yeah, the initial planning stuff. There's already some capital outlaid, but you referenced the 300,000 for Farmington. You thought you had another source that we could use, that we didn't have to use levy or fund to balance to get that accomplished.
Yeah, I jotted down, you know, I think it's probably going to be the state trust fund, because we will eventually sell that to a private concern, and that's the only, we can't do geo-borrowing for that anyway. Or we can't do, we can't do tax-free.
Tax-exempt, yeah, okay.
It would still go against our debt limit.
Yep, but you still have a, you think you have a funding source for it?
Yeah, the idea would be that we would sell them and then break that money.
Cash in, cash out, sure. Okay. Pedestrian Bridge, half a million unfunded for that. Anything you want to chat on, on that, from the staff side?
I would like to take a brain check on an answer for you, because I think what we first want to do is find out, how feasible is this to get done next year? Very unlikely, so we probably only need to budget for design work. So I want to find out what, is it reimbursed after the fact? Is it ongoing? Stuff like that.
Okay.
Keep that in.
Could Justin or Steve, anybody?
Yeah, Steve, Justin's available.
Okay. So we're punting on that one for a little bit, until somebody in staff gets back to us on that, in terms of viability for '25.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though it's not on the list, even though it's not on the to-be-determined list, the Grand Opera House, talk with John Urban, 350,000, that would be straight-up borrowing. That would be all we would need in '25. That's to finish the design and do the pre-bidding work. Then we wait and see how the grand foundation's doing on fundraising. We have the design, we put it on the shelf until the funds are raised. And I think you're looking at '26 at the earliest any...
For construction. Go ahead, Chris.
I didn't turn my page, so I could be wrong. Isn't there a million dollars already in the CIP in 2025 for GOH?
Yes.
If I'm not wrong.
So actually, that's a reduction. Good catch, thank you.
That million dollars was 500,000 donation from the grand and 500,000 city. So now you're reducing the city borrowing by the 150 to go from 500 to 350.
Perfect, good catch, thanks.
So that whole line item is 50/50 as it sits, and we'll move to 10 instead of 6, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Farmington, or tell them about Fernal.
I have a sheet for him.
I have an off-topic thought that doesn't relate to any of these, if I, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just sitting here mulling over the last two days for the Fire Department. We've added eight staff members, which I know, and the other ambulance, which I know wasn't the desire of most of the rank-and-fire firefighters. Now we're talking about cutting the Training Center. Are we going to be sending a message that we are uncaring about our safety personnel?
Well, I was deliberate in my wording yesterday, the Fire Training Center. It wasn't even punting, it was pausing. We need more, I need more information, so whether...
Yeah, definitely not saying it's a no-go. I really like the idea of adding it to the police, but...
So that, punting might be the right word, but pausing in '25 at least on that, until we have a, until this full council has a better idea of its facility needs, the actual capital outlay, how we get there, as well as if there is a way to blend in, blend this thing into a complete public safety training center?
I'll reiterate a glass, yes.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, for me, it makes sense. It's hard to look at finding efficiencies in lots of stuff without looking at those two things in the CIP and thinking about how they might go together somewhere in the middle. Maybe one gets faster, one gets slower. I don't know what that answer is, but it's hard.
Would it be appropriate, then, for us to give staff direction on saying, pull it from 20, pull that project's funding from '25, move it to '26?
And evaluate in the meantime, sure.
And evaluate between now and then. It's not pulling it out of the CIP.
Right.
It's not saying, we're not saying it...
I would never say no to it, I think it's a...
I just want to make sure I'm clear, to your point, to staff, to the firefighting crew, it's a project we support, we just don't know if it's the right thing to do at this exact moment in this, in this way. We want to make sure we do it right.
I think if we'd known the other one was pending, we would have had a different decision on this one, just, right?
And we have the potential, for me, the biggest driver for that is we have the potential to get both of them a better facility for less overall market.
And maybe sooner.
And maybe sooner for that.
That's where I'm at as well.
Okay. Now, before we go too deep, the 7-7 on the debt side, is it your appetite that we just don't do that in '25, and now you're reducing debt? Or that we potentially use some or all of that for, we have other pending needs that could be, that we could do that. We could use that for that staff can accelerate other projects that they're choosing, they can make recommendations, because we don't have to, we don't have to pick the winner. They can make the recommendations. They can make the recommendations.
Especially if there's a solid 26 that they can move up, I'd be fine with that.
I'd also be fine with seeing what the creativity is on getting to that 812 number with regard to this in the first place. I know they're not direct apples-to-apples impact, but if that aids in that, so yes, to answer your question, any ideas are fantastic.
Well, as we point out, any reduction in debt in '25 does reduce our debt payment in '26. So when she starts talking about structural deficit, it does have the potential to help.
Yep.
Like I, I trust Julie and Mark to help make those decisions. I mean, we can look at what those choices are.
Okay.
And I, I think I was more in the vein of wanting to get rid of the majority of that or all of the 7.7 because of 2026.
Okay.
Uh, and that was because I, I'm worried about structural deficit and where we're going to go with these other options. I know things still, our cards still have to go on the table, but I think if we can make 2026 budget look good right now, it's going to help us right now, if that makes sense.
I'd agree, I'd agree with Joe on this. I mean, my, my drug is received to 7.7 if you can. If, if it turns out that it doesn't make as much of an impact as you thought it would in the '26 budget, yeah, maybe we could take a look at some '26 CIP projects, but I would prefer if that 7.7 were moving, that helps us get just the debt rate closer to that 812, that's where I'm at.
So my one thing I want to make sure I'm, it's not devil's advocate, it's just making sure everybody sees the whole picture. We have X amount, we have, we're going to use the $100 million figure right now. We have $100 million in capital needs or facility needs for this, this community right now, and that number doesn't change by, by pushing the debt to 26. If we have capacity or if there's an appetite for that capacity, we do have projects that are in the pipeline that could be advanced, that they need to get done at some point. At least keeping that in mind. I'm not trying to pick a winner right now and advocate for a specific one, but know that...
And I may be going to advocate, not advocate, I don't know. I was looking at a few of the firehouses and I know that...
That's the thing, especially when they, they compound back to back to back.
And I was looking at, those are cheaper than the fire training facility. If we move one of those up, we're still going to be in a net gain hopefully in 2026. I, that was my, I don't want to prescribe what you guys want to look at, but that was my initial thought when I was looking at these things.
Thanks.
I do see some head nodding on that concept, so just so you're aware.
I don't want to speak for the fire chief, but I have been in multiple meetings where he was not happy that we did not have multiple stations and the training center all in 2025. So...
Can't have, can't have everything.
Said, that being said, I would think he would support at least moving some of the stations up if he can't have the station in 2025. That's where my head nodding was coming in.
And I saw, I did see, I know Mr. Larson doesn't always like the head nod decision-making.
I don't, I don't like it at all, but I'm not, I'm taking part, but I don't like it. I vocalize it, yes.
Okay. Um, so in terms of direction, receiving that, you, there was, there was four.
It would likely be 16.
It would likely be 16.
That would, and that would be a, that's a, that's a, that is a staff decision in terms of which one is, again, I'm not going to pick a winner on which station, but that's, again, you guys...
They were all built the same year.
Yes, we know that, so...
Staff views as the one that's most urgent.
The one beneath the water tower.
I just didn't want our safety staff that we...
Yeah, and I appreciate you, you pointing it out and publicly bringing it up. That's, that's a good point to make. Does that give Justin enough time to get settled and talk about Ferno Ave that he didn't anticipate talking about Ferno Ave on?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Well, Justin, the first question out of the gate was on page 405 of the, of the budget, CIP. It lists Ferno at 5.8 million and then this exercise that you went through is at 6.73 million. So that was the first question.
That's different.
Then, when that question came out, I was like, get James, get Justin. So that's, that's why you're here.
Sure.
Can you reconcile that out?
Off the cuff, no.
Well, I, I think I can help. I think the initial thing is the, we're looking at the to-be-determined. The 5.8 was to-be-determined.
My apologies if I didn't include the full cost in that.
So the full cost would have been higher. So I don't think the cost probably changed. I just think he's listing all of the funding sources, not just the to-be-determined.
Nice work.
Good catch.
Okay, all right.
I have that book. Oh, Ferno is on page 407.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. 6,730.
Perfect. So 6, 7 expenditures have identified in the next column, funding sources, and then further breaking out those funding sources to the right, those next two columns, finding 6, 7 and funding to, to put it through. Does council question any of that or have concerns about any of that or, I know James isn't here, but Justin's a good stand-in for James. Questions on the project to, if it's moving forward with this funding source? Or do you want to punt, or do you want to punt on this one until next Wednesday?
You said moving forward to which funding source?
Well, using all of these funding sources to get the project completed.
Got it.
Yeah. One, I guess, the easy question is, is the project going to move forward? And if so, this is how you fund it? I'll just put it point-blank, is it?
And were these, were these funding sources accounted for in our original budget or where, I guess, where are they?
Previous, previous year's leftovers?
Yeah.
If it's fun, yeah.
Right. It's easy.
I, I know how long this has been asked for, the Ferno, and I, I don't have it in me to say, hey, wait one more year. Like I, since they can show me a funding source for it, I will not say no to it.
Same.
I think it's a good connection too. I, I do think it's a, it's a good industrial connection or a good highway transportation connection up there, so.
Yep.
And I know we've, we've punted it a few times already, so.
I see four heads nodding. Four heads nod...
When I said yes.
Four make a decision. Nice work, Justin. You barely said a word and you're...
Good job. I'm all for it.
You can tell James, tell James you convinced we were all no's to begin with and...
Just watch the video.
When you do the final of budget approval, these are amendments that you will be approving. We just want to draft it in such a way that it's in approval form.
It's formalized. We want to make as many decisions today and next Wednesday as possible. The following Tuesday, we would really like no changes. If it's on the fly, that's when things, you know, calculations, decimal points, things go, you know, can go a little haywire. We would really like a clean, we would like full direction given by the end of date next Wednesday. And if we don't have it next Wednesday, I would be in a position to call for a special meeting before that Tuesday if we needed to, because I want to make sure that Tuesday is clean as possible. Just want to make sure council's clear on the path forward, so giving as much direction today is, is a good thing.
And we'll be meeting with staff tomorrow and we have our regularly scheduled staff meeting, but normally we're either, you know, doing, you know, post-game on the previous night's council meeting or pre-game on the upcoming meeting. We have neither. It's the fifth Tuesday, so the staff meeting will be voted exclusively to this. So I, I, I'm very confident we'll be able to, to come back to you with answers to all these questions and fill in all the blanks. So if you have other questions and filling other blanks you might have filled in, this would be an awesome time to tell us.
If we're good on that one, Justin, if you want to go, you can.
Oh, yeah. Good job.
Nice work, by the way.
Thanks, thank you.
So if you don't mind turning your hymnals to the budget enhancements that are in there, I'd like to make sure that direction is clear on what's being included, so when you get the updated numbers from Julie on Friday, that there's no surprises.
Can't find a tab anymore, I spent too many days.
I think it might be, it might be easiest if I just go page by page. We'll do it quick. The first one was the firefighters for the ambulance support and that one was included already, so we can move to page two.
For budget enhancement.
Budget, budget hit.
No page numbers. There's a tab.
Yeah, there's no page numbers unfortunately, it's just a tab.
Sorry.
That's all right. I know how it gets all put together. So first one was the firefighters to support the fourth ambulance unit. That was already included. Can move on to page two and three. These are for the fire department. These are not included in the proposed budget. We didn't talk about them yesterday morning with the chief in any way.
I didn't recommend them and...
And they weren't recommended.
Many were funded by, um, you know, some of them, and then the other ones, IT wasn't recommended either. And I, so I, I don't think you should, I don't think you need to look at any of them.
Okay. So these, these two would not be recommended by it.
And that's fine. I was going to bring up one of these earlier and it's, you can call, you can chalk it up to being new guy. I would just prefer it, I mean, if this is something the fire department needs and it's $4,000, I would like to have this a method where they can do that without it being this process. I understand that that's how this works, but it's a tiny amount of money for the amount of time we're going to consider.
I consider it duplicate work.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, then, and I go back and forth on this personally, because Matt, you and I talked about it a long time ago, then I'd prefer to not see it and let them figure it out on their own with your purview.
I will, I will admit an oversight on my part. I, I didn't give enough direction to finance. I own this.
Perfect. And I'm not concerned about it, I just didn't know why there's a $4,000 enhancement.
Yeah. Each department kind of did the enhancement separate. And full disclosure, I provided what departments had provided, but we also, while we met with fire, had discussed that typically this wouldn't have been an enhancement.
Perfect. That answered my question perfectly.
And a little bit of transparency is not the right word, but I'll use it. In the past, every budget year, council has had a different request. We've exercised our council prerogative differently every single year over the last years I've done it. One year we want to see them all, next year we don't want to see any. Next year, Mark, just give us your, your suggestion ones. It can be a little difficult for staff to keep up with our, our prerogative a little bit, so we'll, we'll, we'll advance through these real fast. The next two pages are also, we've got fire department, patient care devices, that was included in ARPA funding.
Yep.
Security cameras, yep, already in there. This is sustainability training was included in the proposed budget. That's in, uh, next on, full-time employee for parks, maintenance workers, is 87,000 plus. I think Mark wants to share something.
If your inclination is to do this, I heard Ray talk about two things and I would like to confirm with him tomorrow. I heard him talking about offsetting some of this with reduction of seasonal staff and I also heard him talk about additional facility fees. Anything with extra fees or revenues, you know, one of the things, and this goes to kind of the point about, you know, how much of the fund balance? When we're short of, when we fall short of revenues, fund balance, you know, takes care of that. So if you're inclined to want us to keep looking at this, I think we can probably fund this with no levy impact.
I'm, I'm right there on that one. Does that see the value of it?
Agreed.
The numbers are going up. I mean, you know, even, even some of the things you heard, like Kelly talk about with RD8 properties, some of the departments are, Kelly, I want to help you, but, and it's like, adding that extra person helps kind of everywhere.
Do you have a... So I wasn't here yesterday for the conversation on it. In the past, I've always commented, parks, we do a lot of unfunded mandates with our park system.
Yep.
And you've seen it in the last year or two and it's not a, it's not a reflection of the staff we have. And I want to make sure I'm very clear on my comments here. It's not a negative reflection on them. It's just there are so many hours in the day available and there's more work to be done. We've, we don't use certain, we don't use prison labor anymore or jail labor. We, we are losing our volunteer base that help us do certain things. I'm thinking, you know, the flower paintings at South Park and at Rainbow Memorial Park. These are things that are no longer being done. We've got roundabouts and medians not being kept up. We just, we don't have the time. I'm all for supporting our park system and making sure that things are looking the way they should and are upkept and I think this is a, I think it's a no-brainer if we've got a funding source.
Audible head nod.
I want to, I'll echo that too. From being in CVB perspective, this conversation comes up a lot and we ask Ray lots of pointed questions and the answer's always, I need more help. So this is a great way to go. It's economic development for me in general, because those are the groups asking for that purpose. We want to see things prettier, because it's good for everybody.
We'll see what...
Yep.
...blood we can squeeze out of the turnip and, and so that'll be, you know, we'll show how it's funded or not funded if we need any...
If you can't do it. Okay. Um, next page is...
The hard one.
Calls for service, five police officers.
Man, you switched it to four.
Switch it to four.
So I assume that changes the number too.
It does. Sorry, I have it updated, I just didn't print it.
I mean, it's got to be...
423052.
423-ish, if you're doing the simple math.
Probably.
There's no magic pill, that's all levy guys.
And it's ongoing in front.
Yep.
Yes.
As much as I'd love to, I really, I don't think we can, with the other employee increases that we're, we have elsewhere, I don't think I can get around this one.
For me, I've been struggling, this, this should have been in a year or two ago.
Yeah.
It was the same thing. We said yes to four others or five others in other spaces and we, and it's like, we can't. To the chief's point, at some point, we've got to find a, we may have to find a way to try to find a, find a yes. We've got some things going on. We've got some things not being done that I think a lot of citizens would like us to be doing.
I know it's not one-to-one, but we're adding another sergeant and a dedicated officer just that will be primarily focused on downtown. I know that doesn't one-to-one take care of these four.
And I, I think with some of these bigger asks, if we could get on some sort of like, we know how our community's growing, we know that we need more people elsewhere. If we can get on some sort of like people plan where instead of seeing five people all in one year, we're going to see, all right, you're going to approve one person this year, one in two years and it, I don't know, I, these big bites, obviously, they, they cause a knee-jerk reaction with me where I see this huge number and...
And then make Julie nervous.
Yeah, yeah.
And then several of us are choosing a winner or a loser.
Yeah.
Chief did mention when he was here that this would be partially phased in, correct? I didn't know, I didn't hear that. I mean, is that, he can't hire four people all at the same time?
Well, that's the thing, a lot of these, especially a four, we did this a year or two ago. It's usually a July hire type of thing where it takes a while to go through PFC, but...
Yeah, I'd be in the middle somewhere for sure, because I understand exactly what you're saying, Joe. But I also see the need. I mean, I wish the answer were that it helps more with the overtime expenses that we see anyway, but I get why it doesn't. So, I'm in the middle somewhere. Can we do two?
For, well, for what it's worth, five years ago or so, I was asked a question about, well, why don't we do a referendum? And because of the sheet that Julie showed you earlier, when we were at 31% of our levy limit, I was like, we don't need a referendum. We have levy limit capacity. And I can no longer say that to you. I mean, this might be one of those things that, that you make a decision eventually to say, let's take this one to the voters, because Julie's gonna have a hard time, if you guys say yes to some of these things, she's gonna have a hard time balancing levy limits and expenditure restraint. If the voters give us that permission, then we, then we're allowed to do it. So, I'm not suggesting, I'd like to do them too. It's just that, how do we do it when we're already adding, you know, 11? That's, that's an awful lot. And
It's like smelling a baby grand piano.
So, and moving the ambulance, the timing of moving the ambulance is like really good from an expenditure restraint standpoint, because we're moving $6 million. So, we're giving ourselves expenditure restraint room that we didn't have before, but it doesn't give us levy limit.
Relief.
Relief. Thank you. Yeah, it really doesn't.
Julie, can you hear me? All right. I'm gonna ask just kind of a stupid question about the ambulance. What happens at the end of next year, all of our partners surrounding communities say they found another support, another system?
We'll be short $800,000 plus revenue for the, for the calls. So, I mean, it'll be a substantial amount. They're probably about 20% of our calls. So, if we've got about $4 billion, that's probably another 800,000. So, 800, 800, I'm just spitballing, but I've been doing this. I can spitball, and generally, you guys believe me. So, but you're probably looking at a $1.6 million hit.
But then would we?
I don't see that happening.
I, I
I don't see it happening.
You just wouldn't retain those employees in perpetuity if you didn't need them? Because you've been to 14.
You guys, you guys give credit for essentially saying, we're resolved to do this. And I think for the most part, there are a couple of exceptions out there with some of the, some of the municipalities, but the large share of our partners in this are in.
Sure.
And they know that we're the best deal in town.
And they also really have any negotiating weight with the last one, whether they're going at it alone, if they kind of multiply.
Yeah. And I, and I don't see the county creating something. They're, yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah. They're, they're not in a position to do it either. So, and it's not like, you know, we got them where we want them. It's just more, they know their options.
When you look at our budget, it is what it is.
We, we are a very good option for them.
Suggestion on this one might be, no, no decision tonight on this.
Yeah.
Reflect upon numbers that are gonna be given to us on Friday, and then this gets brought back up for a discussion of some size next Wednesday.
Like a silly, the only thing I would have to add, Julie, is that if we went hacks on this and say, 40, we could have two. Question I have is, is that, you know, that would kind of solve half the problem, but does that not really take pressure off the levies? So, if we gave them two, is it just as impactful as giving them four, right? Or the savings don't really materialize in that regard?
It's more of the ongoing, the more FTEs you add, the higher each
Subsequent.
subsequent budget is gonna be.
So, if we add two instead of four, we're not really avoiding the problem really. And then if we're gonna add two more down the line, that doesn't really solve it. So
No. I mean, Wisconsin Policy Forum and different, there's been all different articles about this, but more and more communities, because of the levy limit restraints, have had to go to referendum in order to get adequate staffing. So, I mean, right now with us already looking at 11 FTEs, I just, it goes to that same concept that more and more municipalities are not being able to add 11 FTEs in one budget cycle, so they're going to referendum. It's just, it's a, it's part of the levy limit restraint program through the state of Wisconsin. It's kind of narrows you into this problem. I had a goal, in my previous municipality, we did two public safety referendums in my 10 years there. Probably, I think they were within two years of each other. But you also have that concern about, are they gonna pass?
Did it pass in Washington County, though?
They, yeah. I was lucky enough that they both passed. That's how we were able to do it, because quite frankly, we weren't able to add that many FTEs in one budget year. So, it was, you go to public safety referendum, we went for police, and we went for fire separately. I think we did fire first. And then we kind of, the board kind of said, no, don't ask for any more FTEs for the next like four years, because now all the other departments have to slowly, one by one, get their FTEs added, because otherwise, public safety usually wins.
So, that does answer my question. Essentially, if we did two instead of four, does it really solve the equation at all? Are we still having the same issue?
No.
And so, because we're adding 11 FTEs now, we're kind of out.
I'm gonna say, are we even, are we even okay at 11, or are we gonna be?
It's gonna be tough.
It's definitely difficult.
It's gonna be tough.
I think it's gonna be very hard to add FTEs in the next few years. But this is the finance perspective.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we always get the doom and gloom story, but I know I'm trying to balance at the end of the day, and I think 11 is hard.
To Mark's point, though, a tool for the future may, may be a safe, public safety referendum. And we've never talked about it in ever, honestly.
We didn't have to. I mean, I was discussing over five years ago, I was like, almost like, why are you worried about this? Now, it's a legitimate issue, and you have somebody who has experience in working on it, on the finance end of it. And, you know, I'm not telling you what questions to ask your potential candidates, but that might be a good little functional answer, app question to throw in there. What's your experience in doing referendums, and what's your experience with them? I mean, if somebody's watching this, then they can, hey, write it down, get ready for the test. But, you know, I had done one in Grant Shute the year before I left too. So, I mean, and it was, it's a sales job, folks. This is not just, well, let's just put it on the ballot and it'll be approved. That is, you are naive if you think that. You have to work at it. And you can't necessarily, as public employees, we cannot work at it and advocate for it. We have to just say, here's the information. You need to develop a group of the public to say, we feel strongly enough that we're gonna advocate for it, because all we can do is show you a PowerPoint slide, and that's it. That's all we can do. You know, we can tell you we need it, but we can't go out there and say, you need to vote for this type of thing. And, but I think, I think the time may be here for that.
I was looking at it, yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but eight FTEs in one falls whoop is unique anyway, right? There's not always eight in one chunk.
We haven't done eight.
Right. This is, ideally, this works out great. We've all given it lots of thought. It's done that way for a reason. The full cost replacement of some of this is valuable based on what it was previously. So, Julie has entered concern, and I get it, but from a revenue perspective, I don't have that much fear about it. I get that it's a big number to add, but it's not going to be something we do often, right?
Shouldn't.
Right. You wouldn't think. If we do, it's a really good problem we're having. You know what I mean? If we, if we can always afford to add, we won't.
So, then, we'll use the term punting on this one until next Wednesday, after we see more concrete numbers.
Yeah. What we'll do for the enhancement summary, we'll include this, and we'll show you the levy impact and everything, so you guys can, but then you'll see it in its totality. And then, you know, it gives you more time to reflect.
Few more. Just want to make sure we're giving clear directions, so that way, we can see the, the most accurate information later this week. Then the next one, the mental health and behavioral health initiatives through the PD, that was approved yesterday. So, that'll be included.
And I got a vibe from Chief Smith that they might be able to tweak parking revenue.
Okay. Some possible offsets. That'd be nice.
And one, the sergeant included.
Yes.
That was yesterday.
Sergeant was included in your direction yesterday?
Yeah, that was, that was.
Thank you.
Maybe the authorization.
I get to blame them for that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were absent.
Uh, next up, central garage, kind of a yearly tool allowance. This is partially funded in the proposed budget. Are we
It's good.
Good as is, okay. That would be Mark's recommendation. Next one, OFD admin support.
I didn't recommend it.
Not recommended. If there's anybody who has interest, make sure you raise a hand or drop a flag. Uh, next one, this is, I think, is this fire?
Yeah.
Is the one part, like, some of this
That was included.
Okay, yep. Included, yep. Excuse me. Uh, next one was also for fire, right? Yeah, fleet management.
No.
And that was not included.
Correct.
Great. This one, the next one was funded with ARPA. This is snow removal.
Yep. That would have been, that would have been just added anyway.
Clerical support for OSHA senior centers, not included in the proposed budget. Don't know what, if you had discussion and
We did. It's becoming increasingly difficult for them to find volunteers. I
I'm not seeing
I can't find the money.
Okay.
I'd say added. See new citizens? Come on in.
Let's put this, it'll be on the sheet.
We add it to the sheet.
It'll be on the sheet for review on Wednesday.
If anything, they can justify it by the income they turn around. Oh, is there one?
Not this one.
Yeah.
The other one that we added to the budget for that very reason.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, that was the clerical. This one is the personal training and potential revenue offset. So, this was already included.
Yep.
Next one, IT tech for utilities. That one was included as well. Second, next, IT tech for utilities was included as well.
That's the same position. It says half-funded and water half-funded and sewer. So, there's a water page and a sewer page. So, sorry.
Nope. Thank you for clarifying that. So, that one's already in there. Uh, next one was not included. This is maintenance costs for RDA-owned properties. Trying to find a funding source for that.
Yeah. We did one, if you go to the next page, we did that one, recognizing that maybe we can, you know, use, they're both community development type projects. So, we added 20, but we just, we just couldn't afford it, when it came down to.
Yep. So, that would be one. I'm not seeing any, nope. Doesn't need to be. As Marcus said, the next page was for 20,000 for CIP funds for great neighborhoods, and that was included.
Yep.
Visitor service associate at the museum, that is in as well. And last but not least, this one was also included. This is seasonal traffic helpers.
That was one Jim talked to you guys about.
And for traffic.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? I know I kind of moved fast through that, but I think you guys were okay with it, seemed like. Anything else enhancement-wise, operational-wise, CIP-wise that you want to talk about today while we still have a few moments, if you'd like? I've seen nothing. Otherwise, Wednesday night, 5 o'clock, or 6 o'clock?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just say Wednesday night, 6 o'clock. Starts off with a public hearing, followed by what hopefully will be our last budget session as well, to wrap up anything that we need to wrap up. In between that time, any questions you have, please direct them as quick as possible to Finance and City Manager's Office for them to vet and review. That would be great. Somebody down there wants to speak?
Me?
I think, yeah, you go right ahead.
I didn't know we were getting, I knew that quickly. Sorry. I had one more point.
Yeah.
Go figure. It's part of what, so Councilor Nichols sent an email. I know Mark and Julie saw it. There's a point in there that he made that I agree with, but I wanted to echo some of it based on what we heard the last couple of days. 50% plus of the departments we've heard from made some mention of a third party or an analyst, analyst, or consultant or something to help them find more efficiencies going forward. I think, obviously, generally, this is a great idea. We've talked about it before. Julie mentioned at one point, when she brought it up with the library discussion, that there may be some ARPA interest funds that are available for this kind of thing. I am very much of the opinion that we can arm a new city manager with some extra skills, extra dollars, extra things to make this transition better and look for better efficiencies across the board going forward. And I'd love to make the commitment to that sooner than later if we can, considering, we heard lots about it the last two days. So, it seems to be on everybody's mind. It's not in the budget anywhere. It doesn't need to be included in the budget. But if we can, I don't want to sit and wait, and I don't want to make a, I don't want to have a pilot program. I don't want to have a study. I want to either find a way to do it or not do it, because it seems like everybody's asking for this in some way, shape, or form.
I think
A lot for the end of a meeting. Sorry.
No, it isn't. It isn't. But I like your idea of tying it to, sorry, Mark, we're gonna talk about you without you being here. Pretend that you're not here. I like somehow tying it to the next leader's, I don't even say goals, but that it's the next leader's responsibility
Yep.
to do some of these things. And that would mean that we have to pony up in some way or fashion, but yet not prescribing it in advance, I think, would be something for me. And I, that I would want their, okay, here's what we're seeing, here's what we've heard. Tell us your thoughts and how you might like to best go about it, and then we figure out the way to fund it. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's, yeah, in the ballpark for sure. I mean, same way, it's hard for us to talk, for me at least, about the two train facilities being in the same realm and not working on them together. I'd want Julie to have some input in that, because she, right. And I'm not saying she wouldn't, but
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to not do the things that were talked about. I mean, we talked about indirect, indirect cost plan, developing one for the legal department to have that, so we know how to do it going forward, right? We talked about a third-party fund consultant with the library thing. We talked about a code audit. Everybody seems to have things they want to do, and all those can probably be done efficiently by one person under the guidance of somebody soon. I just don't want to let it, I want to take the opportunity we have to make progress and make progress.
I get the feeling you won't, you and several other council members aren't gonna let the topic go unnoticed. Is that, is that fair?
Probably not.
Okay. So, I think it's also fair, the new, the new leader's gonna start in the first quarter, January, February. And as through this, Mark indicated something else a little earlier, you know, we have some questions to ask these individuals when they start coming to us in the next few weeks, in terms of experiences they've had, processes they've gone through, goods and bads. I think it's, I think it's completely appropriate to try to incorporate that into our process. And then, but that we have commitment. And it's as easy as we just saying we're committed to supporting an improvement process. And we'd like their, but we, I think it's important that the next leader is definitely a part of that decision-making.
Do you mind if I chip in on this a little bit?
Go for it. I agree with that entirely, but just to clarify, I would like us to commit to doing some of that, just because we've heard so much about it, whether they want to do, because they might not want to. That's part of it too. You're not wrong.
But we're the ones, if we want a budget amendment, there'll be a budget amendment the next meeting. It's as simple as that. It's, if it's funded or not, I don't know. But it'll, it'll be there if we want it, to that point. So, I don't think, I don't think the passion for it is gonna go anywhere.
True. And a commitment to it will be verbal as we go forward too. And Julie will know more about whether there are or are not funds for it, which is good. Sorry, Fitz, go ahead.
I was just gonna echo what the mayor said. I think, you know, bringing a new person in, you want them to buy into this process. You want them to be part of this process. I think you don't want to create a situation where you have kind of competing interests. You got a brand-new employee, and I think if you make it clear that you want this person to take a look at how things are operating, and protect, and you have the flexibility, you're gonna, they have the flexibility, you're gonna support them with resources to be able to do that from an outside source. I think that approach would be more appealing to me if I was the new employee coming on board. I don't think you want to get in a situation where you have like competing interests, like, we're gonna bring this external person in, and they're gonna tell us what to do, and brand-new city manager? We really don't care what you think, you know, because we're gonna do this externally. Or, we don't trust staff, or we don't trust you. And I know that's not what you're trying to say. I think, as the mayor indicated, you're very passionate about trying to support improvement, but allow the new person to be a partner with you on that, and do it in such a way where you can provide any kind of goals you want for that person. If you say this is a priority for us, we want you to take a look at this, that new person better pay attention to that, I think. But all, I think the mayor is conveying it in such a way where you're partners in this. You want to accomplish it together for the best for the organization. So, I agree with that point.
Do budget for something like that with the remaining ARPA interest funds. We don't have to pull the trigger on that study. Like, we can appropriate the budget, you don't have to pull the trigger until we have a new city manager or a board, is that correct?
There are, the question kind of was, ARPA interest funds, it's money, money that got generated from the, from the money just sitting there. Do we have to appropriate that specifically by the end of '24? She's shaking her head. No, and I like that answer.
And I would say additionally, you know, the other thing I think is important to consider too, you know, you're gonna go through this process, you're gonna hire someone, you're gonna believe in them. They may have ideas that they want to move forward on in advance of that study, or in addition to that study, or maybe in conflict with when that study takes place too. And I think it's important for you to consider the input that that person's gonna provide, because if, if I'm a brand-new employee and I'm coming here, I want to be engaged. I want to be passionate. I want to listen to everything that you say. I also want to provide my own opinion, you know, based on my own experience. And I think you don't want to, you don't want to diminish that. You want that passion. You want those ideas. That's why you're hiring this person. So, I think, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think it's just a matter of how you do it. That's all.
Agree. I mean, if we're, if close enough, as we're prepared to even discuss arming that new person with some extra things, to do some extra things, I'm all for that. That's good enough for now.
Yeah. One of the things that Julie has to do, as she puts final touches on the budget, is do stuff to comply with expenditure restraint. And we might have some
Contingency.
cushion in there, and the word contingency.
Generally, they build in some contingency to use every, use every tool possible to us for our benefit, right?
So, you could very well use that contingency type of thing, and, and almost make it, and it's kind of taken off from fit. One of the things that I've appreciated going in new, so, I'm not in the room, but I'm telling you, when I've been the new guy in the room, knowing that the council has some priorities that they would like to have the person check out, and here are the tools to go do it, you've basically said, all right, you figure out what tool you need in your toolbox, but we
We're supporting you.
We're supporting you of it. And then
And that's very helpful.
Yeah, then they can come back and take
Helping your hiring, right?
They can come back and go, okay, I've done an organizational scan, and after six months, it's like, I'll tell you, first thing I would do is A, and then, then you guys consider it. And Julie might say, oh, the ARPA money's the best place. She also might say, this contingency, and let her put the, the final bow on the budget before you have her commit to it. But I, she's already got a few ideas rolling in her head. She's, she's got you guys covered.
Okay. Anything else? I just want to make sure.
Nope.
Paul, Jacob, Carl, are all good for today?
I'm good. I agree with those points. I like the idea of a management consultant. Also, just kind of waiting for the fact until we get a new city manager, saying this is something that we're willing to argue with as a resource. I'm good with that. I think, you know, we are at a point in time where we have the opportunity to, to have a review like this, when we have so many different departments asking for, for examples. So, I'm okay with waiting until we have a new city manager. But outside of that.
All right. Staff, Julie, Mark, anything you want to make sure we touch on before we head out? Otherwise, it'll be Wednesday at 6:00 PM here, public hearing first, council discussion second. We usually, we've never really gone past eight. Usually that, that meeting's one of the shortest ones, but if there's anything to work out.
6 o'clock, right?
Starts at 6, next Wednesday. It used to always be 5, so it's one
We moved it to 6. Long story. I know it's at 6.
It's fine. That's why I was thinking 5 before. If there's nothing else. It's fine. That's why I was thinking 5:00 before. If there's nothing else, appreciate, you know, being here. The discussions were very good, and the staff here, nice work. Staff listening in, in their offices and at home. Appreciate all the efforts and nice work to them as well, and we'll see you next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.